To our planning commission this evening, I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm the Chair of the Washington City Planning Commission. Welcome to all the other commissioners, thank you for attending this evening. The first thing that we're going to do this evening is have an invocation by Commissioner Anderson. And we'll follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance that I will be leading as well. Commissioner Anderson. You'd all please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. For the first part of our agenda this evening, there's a couple of changes that need to be made. One of the changes commissioners, item number nine A. This was the zone change. They have asked, the applicant has asked that this be tabled until the meeting of July 21st. Which I make that recommendation that we do that. Is there a representative this evening here for Mr. Heidemann's project number nine C? Okay. I would also propose that we make a change because this nine C was a tabled item on several occasions. That instead of hearing that last, we move that first. And we hear the staff report and make a vote on that item. So the two changes that I have for the agenda are nine C to be tabled and nine A to be moved to the front. Are there any other changes that anybody on the commission has? And if. That's a good point. Eldon and Kathy, I'm going to make a correction on on item nine C. We're not going to do anything with that this evening. If there's a representative that shows up for that, we will address it at that time. I guess that's in fairness, if Mr. Heidemann shows up. I'm trying to think through this. If the applicant shows up, we want him to have the opportunity to speak to his item. And if his item is scheduled for the end and he comes at the end, we want to give him the opportunity to speak to his item at the beginning. Eldon, are you following my thought? Sorry, I was kind of out loud.
Yes, yeah, that sounds in line and great idea.
We'll leave nine C as it is, but nine A is going to be tabled at the applicant request. If there's no other changes commissioners, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda for July 7th.
As Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we accept the agenda as is with the with the exception of tabling nine A.
This July, second that.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set as outlined and discussed. Number two on the agenda this evening is the approval of the amendments from June 16th, 2021. If there's any changes that you have, please let us know. If not, I'll look for a motion when that is ready to be approved as well.
Kathy, this is Commissioner Anderson. Did you get the the changes that I emailed to you? Are those?
Corrections and changes have been made.
Okay.
Well, this is Sheil, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 16th.
As Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved from June 16th. Item number three, the Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Commissioners, do you have any abstentions or conflicts to any of the items this evening?
None, no.
None. Just to make a note on item four A, this is Commissioner Hanson. I live in close proximity to this, I have no financial interest in planning voting. What we'll do now is move along to item number four A. This is a final plat, this is consideration and recommendation to the city council for the Warner Gateway Phase Five. Located approximately Marlow Way and Lucy Lane, the applicant is Sean Colaruso. Eldon, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. The applicant is requesting approval of a final plat for the Warner Gateway Phase Five subdivision. Located at approximately Marlberry Way and Lucy Lane. The subdivision is proposing 30 lots on an area covering 5.99 acres. The zoning for the subdivision is R16. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds it conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Which was approved back on November 10th of 2015. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Warner Gateway Phase Five subdivision. To the city council based on the following findings and subject to the following standard conditions. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, I'll open the floor for you, any questions or comments for staff? The only comment, this is Commissioner Hanson, the only comment that I have is I still do not like that the entrance, that there's not a second entrance that's on the north side of this project. I've expressed in the past that every home there in Warner Gateway comes past my house, which on one hand I'm totally fine with, but they. The second entrance that was created on the south end of the project, I don't think does any merit or any, it does any good for this project. And I would continue to wish that the city would do whatever it takes to get that northern entrance connected. So these people can get through to the main thoroughfares easier. That's all that I have on it. Any other comments commissioners, and if not, I will look for a motion on this item.
So just for point of clarification, I don't see a way for him to create a secondary access point. Is there, unless they go in the next phase up north of that, Jason?
In this subdivision on the north side, it's surrounded by BLM land. And there's a section of road about, I'll call it 100 yards, probably less than 100 yards. That it it looks like it's designed to connect to get people out to Washington Fields Road through Iron Horse Development.
Right.
Instead, what this is doing is backtracking to Marlberry Way. And so all of the entire phase of Warner Gateway, all five phases. It's about 150 houses in total use Marlberry Way.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem with traffic in front of my house at all, I just think there's a better way to do it. And if nothing changes, that's fine, I'll live with it. It's just something I've noticed that there's, it should be a better process and maybe you can see.
But looking at the map, at the little bitty map that they gave us, it looks like there could eventually be from going off the north side and then over into Iron Horse. Is that correct?
Kind of, you can see on this map here.
Yeah, right there. Well, if they pull a map down, pull it down a little bit Eldon, if you could. Yeah, so right there at the top of 4380.
Yeah, so this entire subdivision.
And then it would connect over into Piper.
It's from here to Washington Fields Road, but it could connect that way to get to the city. That's where people, most people are going, and that would take them through the Iron Horse.
Okay.
So it's this piece, right? Oh, this is BLM land.
Like I said, that's all, I mean.
Nothing you can do.
Nobody likes it and there's not, and I'm not opposed to the project because of it, I just wish there was something that could be worked out in that. Because it would be in favor of the citizens that lived in that, in that subdivision. Commissioners, I'll look for a motion if you have no other comments on four, four A.
As Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we accept the final plat. And for final plat approval for Warner Gateway Phase Five subdivision located approximately Marlberry Way and Lucy Lane. Consisting of approximately 30 lots on an area covering 5.99 acres that we send this to the city council for approval.
As Sheil, I'd second that.
I've got a first by Commissioner Sheil, I've got a second, I'm sorry, I've got a first by Commissioner Musso, I've got a second by Commissioner Sheil. Individual voting, Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Hanson, I'm an I as well. The motion passes unanimously, item number four A gets moved to city council.
Well, there's two.
Yeah. Marlberry is the road that it connects to. Marlow is a road in that subdivision.
Within, I was confused on that.
Yeah, no.
Then there's a Luke and a Lucy.
Okay, item number five A, this is a final plat revision. Consideration and recommendation to city council for the Cotton Town Village amended and extended. Located at approximately 300 North Telegraph. The purpose is to increase the size of lot 10 to accommodate a wider building. And adjust the common access, parking and public utility easement to lot three. Small adjustments were made to the common lot lines of lots nine and lots two. The applicant is George and Kathleen Staley. Staff, I'll turn the time over to you for your report.
Thanks Commissioner, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was on mute. The applicant is requesting approval of an amended final plat for the Cotton Town Village amended and extended subdivision. Located at approximately northwest corner of 300 West and Telegraph. The reason for this amendment is to increase the size of lot 10 in order to accommodate a wider building. They are also proposing minor changes, which include adjusting the common access, parking and public utility easement to lot three. And also proposing small adjustments to the lot lines of lots nine and two. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended and extended final plat. And finds it conforms to the original PUD zoning of this development. The subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended final plat. For the Cotton Town Village amended and extended subdivision to the city council. Based on the following original findings and subject to the following original conditions.
Thanks Eldon, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff on this particular item?
This is Sheil, I have a question, what is the allowable building size for lot 10, for example? And will it include parking? Or are they all gonna enjoy the common area parking?
From what I understand, common parking is included to all of those buildings in there. And for the building size, they will just need to stay within city ordinances on that, the setbacks from all the property lines.
We talked about this, the preliminary approval. And the bigger, the only thing we had talked about then was at the time, it didn't have any, lot three didn't have any parking access to the main parking. So you see right there at the top where they've, they've carved off part of nine and part of 10. Allow lot three to have, to have access, that's, that's what we'd asked them to do at the time. Looks like they've done it.
I don't have any additional comments or questions, anybody else?
No.
I'll look for a motion on item five A.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to approve the amended final plat for Cotton Town Village. A minute and extended subdivision located approximately the northwest corner of 300 West and Telegraph Street. And pass it on to city council for consideration with the. The five conditions listed.
I second.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, I have a second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting, Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Musso.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well. Item number five A passes, we'll move that to city council. Item number six A, this is a preliminary plat amendment. The public hearing is, also this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to our city council. For the Labyrinth Point at Long Valley preliminary plat amendment. Located approximately Long Valley Road and State Route seven. The purpose is to switch two building units, 2155 and 2163 from the original seven plex to the proposed eight plex. The numerical lot labels were also revised, the applicant is Don Bean and D.R. Horton. Staff, I'll turn the time over to you for your report.
Thanks Commissioner, as stated, the applicant is adding to home sites here. Lot 161 and 163, which you can see circled in the red lines there. Zoning designation at this particular location is Long Valley Plan Community Development. And the proposed amendment conforms to the approved zoning and meets the subdivision requirements. And other Sydney ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the amended preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the amended labyrinth point at Long Valley subdivision to the city council. Based on the original findings and subject to the following original conditions.
Eldon, thanks commissioners, any questions or comments for staff?
So just a side note, they lost two homes to the subdivision to the east. And wanted to maintain the home council, they, that's, that's why we're adding two homes here in this subdivision.
So they lost two and they added two, so it's a net zero?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're skinny enough lots, 161 and 155, 148, 154 to make two more lots, is that correct?
Correct, the sizing changed just a little bit, but yeah, they're able to stay within the setbacks and make it work.
Commissioners, while you're thinking of other comments or questions for staff, this is a public hearing on this particular item. I'm going to read something with regards to public hearings for those in attendance this evening. The public comment section of this meeting is for those of you who wish to speak on a specific agenda item. It gives you as residents the opportunity to have your opinion added to the record, along with any supporting facts that you may wish to share. These comments are part of a permanent record of our city meeting and will be available by review from our council members when making their decisions on voting matters. While we as a planning commission welcome opinions, comments and viewpoints from everyone, please remember to be courteous and respectful in your comments this evening. We also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes in length, I will indicate by raised hand when approximately three minutes has lapsed. For any reason, if a commissioner feels that a comment is inappropriate or unnecessary, I as the chair will ask you to please return to your seat. I personally have appreciated, enjoyed and learned from most of the public comment periods here in my tenure as the chair and on the commission. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment section, and if you'd like to speak, please come forward to the microphone, state your name clearly and loudly. So Kathy, who's taking notes, can make a record of, of your comments for the meeting, thank you. So whoever would like to speak first, if they have any comments on this particular item six A, please do so. Does not look like there are any comments from here in the chambers. Eldon, is there any chance that a comment was submitted online that came in after the fact?
No, none have come through.
Okay, at this time, I'll look for a motion to close the public comment for item six A.
This Sheil, I would propose that we close this public hearing for six A.
As Commissioner Musso, I second.
Got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public comment is closed for this section, commissioners, I'll open the floor to you again for any comments for the staff or any questions for the developer. Okay, the public comment is closed for this section. Commissioners, I'll open the floor to you again for any comments for the staff or any questions for the developer. And if not, I'll look for a motion on this item.
I guess I have, and this is Musso. And I'm gonna hit you with the same question every time you guys come in front of us. I apologize, but then you, you're gonna give me the answer before I even ask the question, right? Okay.
Hi, I'm Mark Rans. I'm the engineer in the project. The question is the Washington Dam Road. So I asked my dad, which is the developer on that, just right before to get an update. He stated that all the materials for that project have been ordered and have been delivered and paid for. They are waiting for two property owners right away that Public Works is personally working on. They expect those to be wrapped up shortly, and they expect to break ground early next week. That's updated as a half hour ago, so.
Thank you. I drove down the Washington Dam Road today, and I, I see all the little flags, and I keep wondering when we're gonna get something going out there, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's good news.
Dad, maybe, this is a question for you, Dad. Maybe, is there, uh, there's two, two holdouts, if you will, or two residents that the city's working with right now? Is there a worst case scenario that somehow, some way, this gets extended months, years down the road because of two people?
Of course, yeah. I mean, if two people are never willing to, to come to terms, then I wouldn't say years. You end up at the, the last resort usually for a city is condemnation. Even in the condemnation action, there's some formality and processes that the city council has to take before they're allowed to proceed with that remedy under law. But once it be, once the lawsuit begins, you can request immediate occupancy and end the holdout, which just preserves the fight over value for the years and years that lawsuits like to take. So, so even if we get to the last resort, which I don't think Washington City's wanting it to get to or seeking to get there, I think they're trying to resolve it otherwise. Even if we get to the last resort, the law, the law has a quick solution to that once the lawsuit gets up and going.
Okay, so when residents asks us, we should be able to say confidently that Washington Dam Road will be started fairly quickly here.
Yeah, but, but I think sometimes people understand fairly quickly to mean different things than road builders think it means. And so, yeah, obtaining right away and getting everything in order is a little slower than fairly quickly means to most people.
Okay. Let's get into everything's ready to go, though. Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or suggestions, or, excuse me, comments or questions for anybody? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
This is Sheil. I would make a motion that we recommend to the city council to approve the preliminary plat for the amended Labyrinth Point at Long Valley subdivision based on the thirteen conditions.
Does Commissioner Musso, I second that?
I've got a first by Commissioner Sheil. I got a second by Commissioner Musso. Individual voting, Sheil.
Aye.
Musso.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number six A passes. We'll move that to city council with a recommendation for approval. Item number seven A, this is a preliminary plat. It's also a public hearing. This is for consideration and recommendation to our city council for the Franklin Fields preliminary plat located approximately five hundred west, thirty ninety south. The applicant is Megs Limited. And Eldon, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Thanks, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Franklin Field subdivision located five hundred west and twenty nine hundred south. The applicant is proposing sixty nine lots on an area of coverage of two, twenty four point six five nine acres. The zoning designation at this particular location is R one ten, and the surrounding zoning is planned unit development to the north, R one fifteen to the east, Saint George City property to the west, and unincorporated county to the south. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning and meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Franklin Field subdivision to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. I do want to note that we did add condition thirteen on here, which reads the applicant needs to provide approval from Washington Canal Company that removal of tailwater ditches are in concurrence with their plan. And the approval shall show how tailwater will be rerouted to the west ditch along the roadway five fifteen west.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open up the floor if you have any preliminary questions or comments for staff. This is Commissioner Hanson. Eldon, I don't know if you know this or how fast you're able to pull it up, but I was curious, the zoning on Saint George's property that butts up to the west side of this, is it, do we know if it's just agriculture, or is, do we know what that zoning is currently?
Um, our, our maps won't show that, and I'm not aware off the top of my head what, what their zoning is.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Eldon, this is Sheil. I just had a question on the stormwater. Are they they show a detention pond there. This is pretty close to that other subdivision that, that was doing their, their pipe detention. Are they gonna be able to contain their water? I guess that's just just a thought because of the groundwater.
I, I don't want to speak for the engineer, but obviously, they've worked through all the trial and errors and go ahead, Brandon.
Brandon, right, with Public Works, this one is different. They, they're not doing individual lot detention. So they are capturing everything inside the basin, and from the basin, then it runs to Merrill Road.
And it flows that direction, I guess, then.
That's, that's the low point of the subdivision.
Eldon, this is Musso. I was just going to ask you about that, what you just drew out. So now, the only question I have then, well, that's the ball field that's next to it between the school and the, okay, I I get you now, because I remember now that there's a soccer field, kid's soccer field for, for the intermediate schools right there. And is it Washington, is it Saint George City that owns the property, not owns the property, but it's in Saint George proper, or is that county proper to the west, to the immediate west?
In Saint Georgia.
It's in Saint George City, okay.
It's the church property in this town.
Yeah. It's probably eight twenty now, and it's probably his own commercial master plan, commercial.
Yeah. Commissioners, while you're thinking of your other questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing, or sorry, the public comment section for this item seven A. Is there anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to that item or have any questions? Sure. Please remember to state your name for the record. Thank you.
Matt Staley, Saint George Washington Canal Company. We haven't given approval to abandon the ditches on the, on those fields for that. I don't know if a letter has been sent yet or not, but it's been instructed to have a, a letter sent in accordance to that.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody here in the chamber? At this time, I'll look for a motion to close the public comment section.
Commissioner Musso, so moved.
Sheil, second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public comment is closed. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for additional questions or comments. If there are no additional, I'll look for a, a motion on this item.
This Sheil, I would recommend that we forward this to the city council for approval of a preliminary plat for the Franklin Field subdivision based on the thirteen condition, on the thirteen conditions, so stated.
This is Anderson, I second.
Got a first by Commissioner Sheil, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Sheil.
Aye.
Musso.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number seven A passes unanimously before that to city council with a recommendation for approval. Item number seven B, this is also a public hearing, and this is for consideration and recommendation to our city council for the views at Coral Canyon Phase Six. This is a preliminary plat located at approximately Black Canyon Avenue and Highland Parkway. The applicant is Cole West Home, and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thanks, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the views Phase Six at Coral Canyon subdivision located at approximately Black Canyon Avenue and Highland Parkway. The applicant is proposing thirty eight lots on an area of coverage of nineteen point three five acres. The zoning designation is Coral Canyon Plan Community Development, and the surrounding zoning is Planned Community Development to the north, east, south, and west. The proposed subdivision does conform to the approved zoning and meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the views Phase Six at Coral Canyon subdivision to city council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions, all of which are the standards.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for staff on item seven B?
This is Sheil. As I, as I read through some of our public comments, I wanted to just verify, is, is there a, a trail system that goes through this? Does it continue through? So that's one question.
Do we need to pull somebody up, or?
Oh, Commissioners, I'm drawing in the proposed trailway right now. Due to topographic concerns, you can see kind of at the bottom how, how steep it gets. So they are proposing to bring that into the subdivision. Will act kind of as the sidewalk and then pop back out and finish out and around the, the subdivision lots.
Eldon, this is Commissioner Hanson. One of the questions I had about this project, and this, this goes back before my time here, when the trail system was started on the west side, and the first lots in this subdivision coming in off of Telegraph, for example, forty two, forty three, forty four to fifty one. It's my understanding that, that there's a, a trail behind it that could support the weight of a fire truck. Is that what has been used and been called a second entrance to this divi, this subdivision in the past and will continue to be so, to be used as that?
Oh, that's a great question. That's kind of before my time. I am not aware if, if that's supported for fire engines or secondary access, as far as I'm aware, it's not.
Brandon's nodding his head, yes, that's, I understood, that's why a fire truck can fit on that, and, okay. One of the questions that I'm gonna have, I guess this would be for the developer that doesn't need to come up now, I would like to have the public comment section first, but is if that is going to continue to the back half of this subdivision, the, the one we're approving tonight, if a fire truck will still be accessible on that part of it as well as it is on the front of the project. That's a question that I had. Commissioners, and in fact, maybe the fire chief is on the phone or in the meeting. We'll circle back to that. Commissioners, do you have any other thoughts or questions to staff at this time?
This Commissioner Musso, I had one question for the developer that I think is probably a typo. It's on lot one twenty six. So if you can zoom in on that lot, Eldon, it's the first one going into it on the on the south, well, it'd be on the east. Go down just a little bit further where your arrow is, go down a little bit further, and then zoom in on that one, not that one, other direction.
Right, right at the face line.
Yeah, right at the baseline where the, the subdivision starts. That one. Can you zoom in any further on that?
I can. That's as tight as I can get it. I apologize.
Okay, because I'm zooming in on my, on my pad, and it shows that the frontage on that lot is thirty five point four two feet, and I believe that's a typo. Because it's gotta be, yeah, if, if you take the eighty four oh six, the square footage of the lot and divide it by the one twenty five, which is the length, it gives you more than obviously thirty five point four two. So I don't know if, is I'm sorry, what? It's eighty five feet, that frontage? Okay. The developer just said, stated that it was eighty five foot front, which, which makes more sense. Okay.
I would, I would.
Just, we had a comment that one of the lots was like only thirty feet wide or whatever, and it's like, I'm trying to find it, so, okay, thank you. It's not eighty five.
It's gotta be fifty three. Because it says thirty five. The other lots are sixty seven, sixty seven, one lot's fifty three. I just think it's transposed.
Commissioner Hanson, could you have the developer please come up and state that so it's on the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're working on it, Kathy. We're gonna, we're actually gonna come back to that, Kathy, and leave it as a non-answer right now. Can we do that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Sheil. I, I just have a question. How many, how many residences can be in a subdivision with one entrance? That's, that's, do we have a law on that?
They're saying, because we had this question before.
We probably have.
And that it's, my understanding is they're using the fire access as a secondary emergency access.
Okay.
Because Drew, Drew had gone over that many a times. He said that they can use that access as a temporary emergency access as far as, I mean.
So, so in answer to your question, Commissioner Sheil, the city has not adopted a law that says you must have this many houses before you get a second access, but the international fire code has a standard. If your fire chief was here, he would tell you how many it needs to be. And so
He's here.
Is, is he on the, on the, on the Zoom? Okay.
I am, that's me.
I'll just turn the time to Chief Evans then.
Yeah, so the, the, the fire code just requires that when you, when you go over the thirty, the we try to be reasonable in the code. The, it does give you a couple of options. So if we've approved it as a secondary access for fire apparatus, it has two pieces that has the meat. One, it would have to be an all-weather access. So if it's flat, we're pretty reasonable in what that means. If it has a grade to it, then we typically require it to be asphalted or cemented, of course, just due to not the requiring the upkeep that it would require in rain. And then from there, it does have to support the, the, the weight of the fire apparatus for the city. And so the trail you're talking about, they did upgrade that trail. It is not an ideal piece as far as that kind It is not an ideal piece as far as that kind of an access, we actually have driven a fire engine on it. And it, it gets us there, that is obviously a challenging area. And so we tried to be reasonable as we looked at that piece and our ability to really put in another access, so, but the number is, is once they go over thirty. As Council Sig Miller talked about, we, we talked about some city code as far as it goes and some of those requirements of a full access, but we don't have anything that way and for the most part they relied upon the fire code for those requirements.
Chief, this is Commissioner Hanson, do you have any apprehension or anything about this particular, these, these additional homes to be added to that area, are you comfortable with what you have there in place now?
Now that, you know, that's a, it's an interesting question, it, we did approve that and as we met with them a number of years ago and said it was okay. There's a couple of pieces to that, you know, one of the other, actually, there's really three requirements, I guess. The other piece that, that secondary access truly requires is that it's gotta be half the diagonal from the primary, which of course, that one is not that far away. But at the end of the day, we're not really sure that there's really another option. And so to say we're comfortable, we, we feel, we feel like it's reasonable and, and trying to meet the code as best that they can and allowing them to continue. So we, we think that they've done their part and we've agreed to that and that was done a number of years ago.
This, this is Sheil asking, asking you Chief. Back in the day, years ago, when, when you did approve this, was it with this number of lots on it or had they increased the lots since that time?
No, we knew that that was really what it was about when they did that, because they, the, the development was already there as far as it goes, so really, the, to, the whole reason that they improved that, they put some, some more width to it as it kind of bends around, that kind of stuff to reinforce that and they did that because of the, the additional units. And so I know that they put some more in at that point, but when, when we agreed to that, we, we understood that that, exactly what it meant, which is, you know, what's before you today as well.
Commissioners, I would just add that the solution that the city council accomplished for this development is not in any way precedential for other developments. It, it's the solution that was achieved for that particular location and, and the, and the development that was anticipated, but if that were a new development before you today, you might see that the city would, would expect more than is, is there, I don't know, that would be up to the council. And so it's a solution, the city acknowledges its role in, in crafting and acknowledges the developers reliance on, on the city's demands upon them, you know, widening the trail and, and the different costs that it took. But, but yeah, this is not, this would be a solution for that area, not a precedent for our city.
I guess my biggest question was though, when it was first approved, were they larger lots or were they this design?
The, the Coral Canyon master plan has influenced the design from the get-go, the developer of Coral Canyon has amended some of, some of their plans. But when, when this secondary access as it is currently constituted was approved, the city was aware that additional phases would be coming and on that, on that location.
This Commissioner Musso, I live in a subdivision with only one access. It has a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-plus homes in it and it's only, it's fifteen years old. So it's, it's not uncommon, I mean, it's not optimal, but it's not uncommon to have one access into a subdivision. I have a question, another question for the developer. I think there was some misinformation put out somehow about this and I just want you to clarify before we actually start entertaining comments from the public as to what types of homes these are going to be, I'm assuming they're going to be consistent with what's up there, that they're going to be a Rambler style home, they're not going to be townhomes, they're not going to be, they're not going to be
duplexes.
Duplex types, they're not going to be an eightplex because of the way the lots are set up, but if you could please address that issue, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much, my name is Eric Day, I'm here representing Cold West Development. I'll answer that question first and I'll hit the lot size on the other one. Yes, there is no change, no duplexes, no townhomes, no condos, all single-family Rambler style, single-story. Exactly, or at least pretty darn close to what we already have up there. So no changes there, the lot furniture on the one, I just did the quick math, it's sixty-seven point two four eight feet. Sorry about my eighty-five earlier, I was, did bad math. And then on the fire access, if I can just quickly put in, to answer the density question that's up there, by the PCD, we're actually allowed to have over three hundred and fifty units in what we call Area Four, which is the entirety of it, and we're only having a hundred and fifty-seven. So we're actually coming in less than half of our allowed density.
Thanks Eric, Kathy, did you get, that was the developer to answer the previous question earlier, if you wanted to fill your notes in there, just so you know. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or would you like me to open up for a public hearing at this time, or you think of some others? I'll open up the, I'm going to open up the public hearing for this particular item. Something to note to the public here in the meeting this evening, we did receive all the comments that were submitted. We've had a chance to review those, there was quite a bit of, it appears to be misinformation that we received in some of the comments about these being townhomes and things of that nature. What our expectation is as a commission, after knowing what we know, hearing what we've heard this evening, is that this will be consistent with what we've already seen up there, it will just be an extension of that. And so anybody that'd like to make a comment this evening, you're free to do so, if you stand up and talk about you don't want townhomes, you're going to look foolish and I'm trying to warn you, so please don't do that. We were familiar with the very similar comments, the traffic, the density, you know, these things that come up quite a bit in subdivisions. So we welcome your comments, I'll open it up to the public hearing now, so if you'd like to come up and make a statement, please remember to state your name so Kathy can understand and if I raise my hand, that will be a consideration for you to please finish your comments, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the time. And I'll do respect, Mr. Musso, this isn't fifteen years ago, number one, and in regards to Mr. Sig Miller's comment, we certainly were promised from Mr. Fisher and others that like lot size would be issued based on the financial investment we made, as you can see visually. They look almost half of the views entirety there. In previous lots and previous homes prior to this and the promises assured us that it would be like congruence in representation of those extended lots, they, I think in generality, there's been maybe submitted, but maybe I can read a prepared comment, some of which would be duplicated, but if I could have the views of representation here, please stand, so you know, anything I say they may agree with, but there may be extended comments, so if you could stand, if you represent views, just show the significant interest, half of which we cut back because we, we didn't think there'd be room. So it is of interest to us, significant interest. Cold West should conform to the overall design to keep congruence with the rest of the youth's community. The proposed design Phase Six of the use has an average lot size frontage of sixty to seventy feet, which means that it would need tiny setbacks that do not match the conformity of the rest of the development, especially the promises that were made with former or current representation of Cold West. It should require at least a fifteen-foot spacing of the rest of the development and the views. In addition, this compressed view of the lots would increase the capacity density of the area by approximately thirty percent. This would be an additional traffic existing or exiting on Highland Parkway to telegraph causing greater pressure on already taxed development. Along the fact, there is no park effort or community area where those extended homes could enjoy the, the taxed pool and sports court that aren't exist in the homes, especially Phase Four still coming, Phase Five, I'm assuming as well in development. But finally, we are living in an extended and extreme drought. Bringing in additional density to this area on top of the density in other zones in Coral Canyon is irresponsible, we believe, for the management of the scarce water resources. And nor what is the overall game plan, it seems like we're creating fire management here. Tremendous growth, we need it in the area, we don't want to keep Cold West from, you know, creating a solid business, but with respect to what was assured us and promised us based on the hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in each lot prior to in the development of our homes, we would appreciate your view and concerns to increase the sizes of these lots, there's just too much, too much traffic as it is already. And the continued development that would occur from the trucks and the extended construction coming through our neighborhoods is exhausting. Needless to say that many of us endured much with Cold West in the development of our homes. Continual challenges and promises and emails that we sent them, that they were ill to hear and to respond to. I can't imagine what's going to occur. Based on the fact, you can see visually here, the difference of the lot sizes again, I, I think I've said enough, so there may be further comment, but appreciate.
Could you tell us your name for the record, we didn't catch it at the beginning?
No way, because then it's on the record, so.
That's why I want to.
But I appreciate your time.
We'll forget everything you said.
And I appreciate Doug for your comments, honestly, for questions about this issue. It is of tremendous interest to us, okay? Thomas Madden Lot Four, Two Eighty-three, North Highland Parkway.
Thomas, I almost thought you really weren't going to give me your name, I was like, what am I going to do with this guy?
I'm easy.
That's good, thanks.
Thanks Jason.
All right, you're making me say it, hold on really quick. Who was here the last meeting, we had another Cold West group come up and one of the things I learned in our training that we go through is when we clap and we shout and do all these things in affirmative to people that, that you, that are speaking for you and your favor, it could work as a detriment to you and the legal system down the road, so as hard as it is, I know you agree with him, you think he has great comments and I don't disagree with them, try not to clap, try not to yell, it just works against you in the long run down the road if it turns ugly, so just to help you all, I appreciate it, it's called clamoring, we ask you not to do it, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Craig Anderson and I live at twenty-two sixty-two Lower Canyon Drive. And I'm just grateful for this opportunity to, to kind of get some better ideas of what their intentions are. As a as a grandfather of eleven grandkids, I'm really disappointed that they're abolishing the trail. That truly is the only safe place that our kids can ride and feel safe with all the construction that's going up and down the road. When we go on the trail, we don't have to hold hands, okay, we, that's their, that's their, that's their playground and I'm just want to voice my opinion, I'm really disappointed in not finishing the trail and completing the trail. That's what we've loved St. George, that's why we've loved Washington City, is that it's, it's for the community, everything that, that our taxes have gone to, it seems like it's, whether it's building soccer fields, trails, anything else, it's to help bless these families and so I just want to make that known, that I'm, I'm just really disappointed that, that, that now we tell our kids, grandkids, well, we got to come up here and then get on the sidewalk and watch out for backing up cars and construction trucks and everything else. So that's all I have to say, but thank you for your time.
Thanks Craig. Oh wow, that's it? Awesome, there's somebody chomping at the bit, I can feel it. See, I knew it, there we go. Don't forget to state your name.
My name is Rodney Cruz, Two Six Nine, North Highland Parkway, next door to Tom there. Just a couple of things I want to bring up, August sixteen, twenty seventeen minutes, talks about the views, it's initial preliminary plat approval. In there, it said that the trails would be used for emergency access and some of the subsequent minutes, minutes talk about it also. Thank you. Anyway, some of the subsequent minutes talk about the trail also. So if the trail's going to turn at, I think lot one fifty-one or or something like that, if it's going to turn there and then the sidewalk take over, emergency vehicles are not going to be able to move from one side to the other on either side when it gets around to the end of it, so that's another indication of really the trail really needs to be in place. Either it's for emergency and you can't have the sidewalk or it's not for emergency and the sidewalk's fine, but as I said, the August sixteen, twenty seventeen will touch on the initial approval for the views. The second thing is about water. I guess a few weeks ago, when Cold West approached the council and the committee about Solus that they want to develop, it came up about water pressure and there be enough pressure to support the new subdivision. I don't know how we get our water, what that infrastructure is, but it's something to consider if there still be enough water pressure to accommodate these additional homes that they're putting in based on our current infrastructure. That's it for me, thank you.
Thanks Rodney.
Hi, my name is Sean Gallantine, I'm at Two Nine Seven, North Highland. I work for a company called Warehouse up in Washington State and we're real big on safety. One thing is, the biggest concern that I had showing the incoming and exiting of our development is it's only one way in and one way out. That's going to bottleneck right there at that light, all up and down that Black Canyon and Highland. I'm really concerned about that, we talked about the trails being an added exit, that's just around lot one in the views, there's like a big turn, there's one that goes up toward the, the model home. I don't know, you get a lot of people trying to exit this division, if there's any catastrophe or fire at all, we're in trouble. We are really in trouble. And my thing is, I want to alert as many people in our neighborhood as I can how to get out of there safely, if there is something, a catastrophe, catastrophe of any kind. That's my warehouse or background, that's what I want to make sure is in place. As a community, we have a phone book of everybody that we have there, we even have what kind of dog you have, if you get your dog lost, we know where to bring it back home to. These are the kind of people that we have living there. We care about each other. So I, I don't feel like Cold West has our best interest at heart for this. And I just want to make sure that whatever's discussed in the future, this going forward, that, that's a big consideration. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you Sean.
Hi, I'm Dan Harwood, my concern is with the trail system as well. Where it's truncated at lot one hundred and goes through the neighborhood, it's not a trail any longer, it's a sidewalk. I've walked most of the trails on this side of the city and none of them go through neighborhoods. They've spent a lot of resources to widen trails, to, to bypass neighborhoods and to run it through the, the neighborhood where, as Craig said, you have to dodge traffic on a very narrow sidewalk, it's no longer a trail system. And I don't know what the rules and regulations for the trail system are, but it's not adequate and you also have a ton of open area behind there that the residents or anybody walking the trail will not have access to. It's basically isolated that all of us from the, from the, from the open areas and the common areas behind that. So I would hope that you would recommend or require them to complete that trail system that's congruent with the rest of the trail system in Washington, thank you.
Tiffany Anderson, and I've been a resident here for a year, I also use the trail system and I even walk across the street. And that Telegraph Road is a four-lane highway with semi-trucks, that's the other access off of the freeway. There's very, a lot of traffic and we often cross there to go on the trails to get up to the park on the other side of Coral Canyon. My thought is when I look at this, there is no open space up there in the thirty-eight homes. We however, put in our own pool in our backyard, we have not used the community pool. But I'm looking at this, there is no park, there is no open space. Down, our home is not even on this plot, in fact, the map that you had, our backyard, it was all open space, we could see to the bluff that was down there. But I, I would recommend the trail also, but I know, I don't know if you've been out there, but those. But those five lots, the back is sheer lava rock. So in order to get a trail, they're going to have to either make those smaller or eliminate it. And it's sheer, so there might have to be a railing of some sort or bring it up like the others. And I'm a little bit concerned about the access also being on that road for emergency vehicles. I was on a walk one particular day in Washington City was there. And he told me we got our water from the well that was across the street. He says, that's where your water comes from. It wasn't Sand Hollow. And he says, as long as it lasts. But he was there to tell Cole West that they needed to beautify that trail, that there was no vegetation there. And I'm thinking, okay, we're in a fire zone and it's hot and they want to, how it's going to get water. But anyhow, they were there to tell them that they needed to, besides just putting rock and beautify it, that they need a vegetation along that trail. And I'm thinking if they put vegetation on that trail and then you're going to use it as an access point for vehicles, it's not a sound piece of property and the trail is not wide enough. Thank you.
Last call. Anybody else like to stand up? I knew I'd have one more.
I'm Heather Paxman. I don't live in that subdivision, but I've been listening to these comments. I do live in the Cove, no, Washington, on Wakera Cove in the Seminole. Anyway, up there, Indian Hills. And I agree with most of the comments made by the residents there, that there needs to be a trail safer than what is on the sidewalk. And the cliff is a problem. It makes sense, everything that they've said, I just kind of seconding. And the lots, if you look at the sizes, look a lot smaller. I think they could do better to come up with a better plan. From outside view, it looks like just a money grab for the developer. Sorry.
Thank you, Heather. At this time, commissioners, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Sheil. I propose we close this public hearing for seven A. Seven B, sorry.
Anderson, I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that closes the public hearing for item seven B. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for discussion among ourselves or discussions for the developer, I believe Eric is here, if he had, we have any questions for him. Eric, you might want to come up because I think we do have some questions. I know I do that maybe you could help us understand the logic now. As I hear the fire chief tell me that he's comfortable with what we have in place, could you help us understand the thought process behind the layout that you have here? And how you did incorporate the trail into this plan that we're seeing here? Maybe there's a good reason that it's that way, so I wanted you to speak to that.
Yeah, I think I can probably help a little bit on that and thank you for the opportunity to speak. On the trail, one of the residents there kind of made a really good point for us. On the side of there, it's basically a cliff. It's literally almost impossible to get a trail there and make it feasible. So what we did is in that specific location, we brought it in. But one of the people, person, commenter said that it's going to be a narrow sidewalk. It's actually not. We're proposing a ten foot sidewalk in that area, the same width as the trail going all the way around. So that ten foot segment will continue throughout the subdivision and then back out to.
Concrete or is it asphalt?
Concrete, I believe.
That's kind of what I wanted to hear because I figured because it is a sheer drop off, do you really want a trail? I figured that's why you guys tried to avoid.
We'd love to continue the trail. You know, we really tried to do this phase with a lot of good forethinking planning, or at least that was our intention. You know, one of the people said that it's a money grab. This is anything but a money grab. We could have literally, according to the master plan, clogged one hundred and fifty residences up here. We had density for that. So it's anything but a money grab. What we're trying to do is really do some smart planning, continue what was already started in the prior phases and just continue it through.
Can you tell me what you're going to use on the, it's labeled on here is HOA number two and HOA number one? Is that going to be like a little green area, open space or what is that?
Yeah, it's just an open space. You can actually see those throughout the subdivision.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So there will be some sort of, is there anything there? Is it, is it grass and a bench or is there anything at all that a resident might?
It's proposed probably to stay in a natural state, but it'd be up to the HOA to how they want to finish it.
Okay, so that was something they take up with the HOA then if they wanted that there. Okay. And my last question is, I have a guess at this, but I'd rather ask and be accurate. With regards to the square footage on lots that have already been built up there, is it, is it R one ten? Is there anything less than ten thousand up to that point?
I'd have to take a look, but I can tell you that they're consistent with the size of the other lots within phases.
Because that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see nothing new be anything less than what's already there.
And that's what we tried to do. In fact, one of the lots is, I believe, about twenty-one thousand square feet.
Yes, twenty-one seven.
Yeah, some of them are really quite large. So like I said, I mean, our main goal was to work within the topographical landscape that's there. It's a challenging area. I mean, what's left in Coral Canyon pretty much is all challenging for various reasons. And what we really try to do is let the land speak to us and not have too high of a density, but rather just kind of continue on with what has already been plotted out. I could maybe answer, let's see, we talked about sidewalks.
Yeah, water pressure was another one that that came up on a previous Cole West issue with Coral Canyon.
I probably let city staff answer one, but they haven't voiced any concerns with water pressure in this area to us.
Okay.
So this Commissioner Musa, I have a couple of questions also. So the trail on the far west side, that extends behind lots one oh two, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, all of those where he's got that north red line, I guess. If we're looking at this as north, south, east and west. And then it cuts back down in front of lots one hundred ninety-nine, ninety-eight and around through those two little knobs. If that, if that is ten foot wide, do you, okay, here's my first question. Do you typically have block walls behind all your homes?
Yes.
Do you provide the block walls behind all your homes as part of the development?
Yeah, in fact, I'm pretty new with Cole West and when I heard that they did that here, I was, that's a really nice feature.
Okay, so that's, that was my first question. So my second question is then you're not going to adjust the size of the lots necessarily, but if instead of having the ten feet in front, can't you push it behind the block wall to the backside? You're going to be leveling off those areas anyway. So why can't the trail go around the lot as opposed to in front of the lot?
And maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. I probably am. But are we talking about where the trail line, the red line is extended to?
Okay, so he's got the, it, where it turns down, okay?
So here, I'll show you right here. So right here, you have the trail system.
Right.
And then it cuts back like this.
Correct.
And you said the trail's going to be like this down to that point.
Correct.
And that's ten feet wide.
Correct.
And you say you provide block walls behind all the lots anyway.
Yes.
So what difference does it make if we pull the lots the ten feet forward here and create the ten feet behind?
Oh.
Walls.
Because of the cliff.
Well, you've got, you've got cliff here anyway.
You lose an extra six feet on the lots because you still have to do a four foot sidewalk and then a ten foot.
But is this, is the, is the trail replacing the sidewalk or is there a trail plus the sidewalk?
The trail's replacing the sidewalk.
And that's what I'm, that's what I meant. The reason that we're not going behind the homes is a cliff. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm just.
It's a good idea. I like where you're going.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I like to brainstorm everything.
If it wasn't a cliff, I would ask you to do that. Absolutely. Keep it congru, one of the guys said that.
If it wasn't a cliff, we never would have brought it in. I mean, just as we have in every other phase, we've kept it on the.
This is, this is Commissioner Anderson. I mean, so with that said, then these lots back here, you know, one hundred to ninety-six, you know, are all, you know, they're all good sized lots. They're half acre to quarter acre. They're big lots. They're a lot bigger than anything else in there. You would lose six feet worth of space on the backside of there because you'd have to have the four foot sidewalk plus the ten foot trail on the backside. But, but if you did that and that made people in the community, you know, a lot more amenable to your project here. I mean, is that something that you guys would, would be willing to entertain?
Well, we'll entertain anything. I mean, as long as it makes sense. I think from our perspective, what we're trying to do is keep the lots as big as we can while providing amenities either required or in this case, not necessarily required back to you know, our community. We want to provide the best place that we can for the people to be buying these. This is what we felt was the best possible solution for that.
This is Sheil. Just, I like where you're going with that. But I think they would have to put maybe not a block fence, but a a post fence or something on the other side, just for protection on that cliff.
It's eight feet tall of lava. You, they've got an eight foot tall retaining wall there on that side.
Okay.
What they would have to do is they'd have to have six more feet of either concrete or asphalt, whatever you do the trail out of, which would be a cost. You'd have to shrink your lot size by six feet and you'd have to add a block wall on the backside of those lots, whereas currently they don't need one because they have an eight foot.
Right.
Retaining wall. So there would be some cost to it. But it would also take the trail off of the street, which is not really a trail. It's a big sidewalk.
There's some other subdivisions in the fields I've noticed that have, oh, what is it called? Brookhaven, maybe? Is Brookhaven in front of Stonehenge? Where they have something in front of the houses that's bigger, where it's like, they have a sidewalk, but there's a lot more space for a trail right in front of somebody's house. It looks okay. It's, 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 there's vegetation there. It's taken care of, I believe, by the HOA. But it would put, it would be something bigger than a sidewalk in this situation. That would lessen these lots a little bit. That would accomplish, I think, what some people want. I don't know how. Yeah, I don't know if that's, if that settles it, but that's something I have seen in other subdivisions before, something to think about.
Yeah, you know, trails are interesting because the city doesn't necessarily have an ordinance that says they must be asphalt, they must be off sidewalk. The council generally prefers trails that connect and the trails that, you know, allow just activity and, you know, open space type movement. But we have trails that cross sidewalks and, and, and cross places that don't just look like an asphalt trail, mainly because the council would like them to connect. So if the developer hadn't brought any connection and just had your trail stub, you would probably have the same concern that the council would, which is how do we get these to connect? And so we don't have, we don't have a standard that's just demanded at this point. This, of course, comes with staff recommendation because it's sufficient to meet our, 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 our trail expectations. But there, there's, there might be a workaround to get something that this commission would find sufficient to recommend.
So this is Muso again. So I got, I have another question. Is your, your setbacks typically is twenty-five feet off the front to the road? So is it, I guess the question would be, would the setbacks start at the backside of the trail or at the front where the road is?
Start of the property. It's the backside of the trail.
It stops, it starts where?
At the start of the property line, which would be the backside of the trail.
Backside of the trail, so it'd be twenty-five feet back from that side.
Depends on the size of the lot, but.
Yeah.
Like twenty feet probably.
Okay.
For most of these.
Okay, I'm just thinking it's not from the street so that the trail takes in. Okay.
One of the things that I want to make sure that I'm very clear about is when I'm thinking of trail, more so than the trail, I'm thinking of making dang sure that the fire chief is comfortable in every aspect of this. And I look at that other trail as a fire access or as a secondary access. So it's not, it's just something I want to make sure that if, for all the staff that's listening and that they have additional meetings with the developer moving forward on this project, I'd like to have ample opportunity for the fire chief to continue to approve this as something that he feels comfortable with, given any kind of an emergency out there that we need to get to. Trail or no trail?
I don't think it's proposed that the trail reflected on this face be used for fire access at all.
I wish that would be the case, but it's clear that it's not going to happen that way.
Yeah.
And they couldn't make that turn either.
Right. And so I just want to make sure that the fire chief is comfortable and he said he is, but there should be, I hope, other opportunities for him to say, all right, let's stop for a second. I'm not comfortable anymore, whatever it might be. Ideally, that's what I wish would happen, but it's not possible.
But I think, I think the, the fire access is the choke point there at Telegraph.
Yeah, so there's.
That's the issue more than anything else. And I think, yeah, and you're not going to change that. And that secondary fire access was to alleviate the choke point there. Because all these roads back in here, you're going to be able to get to either side of, of the, because there's roads going down both sides of the development.
So this is Commissioner. If those two roads both intersected with Telegraph, the fire chief would comment on your, you know, your turnaround areas and things like that. And, and Commissioner Muso is correct. The fire access was to alleviate that there's a one way in off of, off of the intersection at Telegraph.
All right. Thank you.
So this is Commissioner Anderson. So three weeks ago, we talked about the trail system over on Washington Dam Road. And, and it was the, the way it was proposed was similar to this, where it was replacing the sidewalk in front of all those homes. And, and it was abandoned for that very reason that you had everybody's driveway coming across the trail system. Now, granted, that's onto a much busier road than this. But I still think you've got issues of people walking on trails. And when people tend to walk on trails, a lot of times they don't think about the fact that they're walking across someone's driveway. You know, and you can have issues where people back into them or whatever, just because nobody's paying attention. And I can, and I can see where, if there were no other alternative, you know, where you could do that. But where you've got lots that are, some of them half acre in size and you can put that trail system behind the property. I, I think that's a win-win there.
Yeah, there's the, the dam road trail section that was discussed and altered because of concerns did have a concern of, of, you know, the, the residents driving across it. In that situation, the, the houses were all a much lower elevation than the trail. And so there's a concern of visibility as people came up and down with equipment and large vehicles. But it's still a concern, which is vehicular traffic that crosses a trail. And I think that's a safety concern and a, and a fair one.
Any other questions for Eric?
This is Commissioner Anderson. I have a question for you, Brian. You haven't been on the hot seat tonight. So quite a few people have asked a question about water pressure in the area. And that would be your department. I mean, has this, has this gone through? Is there sufficient water once these lots are, are built or do they need to do anything to make sure?
This, this one's got sufficient water pressure. It was the other end, Solus. It's closer to the tank. So that's, this one does have sufficient pressure.
Okay.
Sad, maybe you can answer your question.
There's not, no, you can, you can wait till you get invited. No more comments here. Mr. Wright did say that there is sufficient water pressure. Sir? Sir, the public comment is closed. Go ahead.
On where this is a is it a P C D?
Correct.
And it's not an R one fifteen. What classifies lot sizes? Do, how did, how did they determine how many? They keep saying they could put a hundred and fifty more homes in here, but how, what? The developer. What classifies that? How do, I mean, because it's, I mean, there's nothing keeping this the same lot sizes going through here. So who makes that decision?
So a P C D is a planned development where there isn't necessarily straight zoning that guarantees lot size, at least, at least maximums and minimums. This body in the city council and the developer who really determined that, there is a development agreement or a, or a P C D agreement that will define the upper limit to density. And the applicants reference that in this meeting, which is kind of the upper limit to it. And it sounds like they're well within that range. But if, if the planning commission and the city council think the density proposed that doesn't meet with your concerns for the public welfare and the citizens and the interest of Washington City, this is your opportunity to express that. This is your chance to work with the developer on influencing the, the lot size.
Okay, that, that's what I was curious about because, I mean, we got a lot of really big ones and then it kind of does shrink up here at the end. And there's no, there's no, I'm just curious where they come up with the idea that, okay, you can have three hundred homes in this area. There's no. I'm just curious where they come up with the idea that, okay, you can have three hundred homes in this area. If it's feasible.
So there's there's a couple of ways they do that. One is develop with really big lots on front. Saving your density for the back. And I don't know that that was what their decision or not. But when the when the P C D agreement was reached, the terrain was identical then as it is tonight today now, right? They were aware of the different challenges of the terrain and the location. And so was the city. And and so that P C D agreement reached a maximum density. And and the applicants within that. And so was this application today. But one one way we've seen developers do that is though, you know, they'll they'll have maybe their. Their their large lot sections, priority lot, whatever you want to call it, and then they'll squeeze density into other places, trying to maximize density. And so I don't know exactly what their plan has been, but.
All right. Thank you.
So commissioners and for the general public, one of the things for us to remember is that we're recommending bodies to the city council. One of our. Our tasks at hand is to make sure that they're following the city guidelines and it falls into the parameters that the city has. And so with the conversations we've had this evening, I I for me personally, I know where my vote lands. I'll look for other questions or comments from you. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion that we approve or deny this and move along to city council to to read the public record that's been put on. There's obviously some issues that the public has that live in the residents that live in that area with the trail, water pressure, the access. And those notes will be available to the city council. So at this time, if you have anything additional to add. Or anything new, please do so. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to move this along. Go from there.
I just had one quick question. So. Corey, you're our resident expert, basically, because you develop. But so you're saying they're going to lose six feet essentially off the backside of these lots compared to. You know, if they pull them up to the street.
The trail, the trail's ten feet total.
Okay.
And the sidewalk would be four feet. So if you have trail plus sidewalk, you got fourteen as opposed to ten. No, he's just saying.
No, I'm just looking. I'm just looking because I'm looking at numbers.
Sure.
You know, off the top of my head. So when you get down there to those lots, like ninety ninety four, I have mine blown up. So eighty nine, ninety, ninety one, ninety two, ninety three, and ninety four. You're going to be losing about four hundred, maybe five hundred square feet. Because it's eighty two times six is four hundred and ninety two square feet off the top of my head. So, you know, you got a ten thousand square foot lot, you're losing five hundred square feet roughly. You know, you're at ninety five hundred square feet, you're at ten two, you're at ninety seven hundred square feet, you're at ten two, you're at ninety seven hundred square feet. You're at ninety six minus five hundred is ninety one hundred square feet. So I mean, these are still going to be. Decent sized lots. And and I guess my point being is that, yeah, they might not be as big as the other ones. In the subdivision, but they're still. Given what lots are nowadays and what's being built, they're still decent sized lots. So. The only the only problem with the whole thing of putting the trail on the backside of these lots, in my opinion. Is that then you have eighty eight and eighty seven. That are down there that are already developed. Where you can't put the lot behind it because they probably already have it done. You see what I'm saying? That's that's.
Where does Eldon, where does the trail come in?
Comes in over near eighty six.
Clear over there by eighty six?
Yeah. And then it comes around that the backside of eighty six, it looks like.
Yeah. So if you put it there, you'd have to come in.
You'd still have.
Between eighty nine and eighty eight.
But you'd still be. Yeah, you'd still be in front of those two houses.
Unless you went up on top there, but yeah.
What if they were reworked for eighty nine disappeared and it connected and came into there? It would still connect to the road where the sidewalk, but that would be less. Uh, frontage in front of houses. Just a thought. Because if we can adjust lot sizes and there's nothing. Maybe just.
Ninety and ninety one are almost. It'd be it'd be a pretty small house on those two lots.
The the one thing I keep thinking about is this is this is the trail enough to to say to a project that we recommend for denial to the city council? Like, I don't. I don't really answer to that. I have a feeling about it, but I don't. I don't think so. I think that maybe somehow we add a condition that they they. They look at this trail situation and and maybe even the developer wants to look at possibly reworking this somehow. But yeah, it's it'd be hard pressed for me to say that it gets denied over a over a trail fronting some houses. And I shouldn't minimize that, but it's. I don't. We've had. We have other parts of the city, so.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I guess let me just run through my list here. I mean, I think. So the water pressure was was an issue, which Brandon says that that's not an issue on this end. So Public Works has looked at that. The fire chief says he's okay with fire access. Some people have talked about uh, lack of open space, but I I'm counting here. They've got. Five and a half acres of open space in this in this plan. It does. It meets the P C D. So meat zoning, it's almost half the density of what the P C D is. I I think some of the lot sizes are. Odd shaped. And as a builder, you know, that's going to limit what you can put in there, but they are big lots as far as actual size. They're they're plenty big. They're, you know, they're. Most of them are probably larger than some of the the surrounding lots. They're just narrow, which makes them just an awkward size. But again, that's, I mean, the builder will have to decide what what house, you know, to put on there, but. I think the. I do think, though, that if if it's if it's possible to put a trail and and not have the trail be the sidewalk and go across people's. Uh, driveways, I and I I understand that that's going to be. Necessary in some cases, but I think in this case, where there is sufficient room, they may have to rework a lot or two in here to make it work, but. So I'm gonna. I'm gonna make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. Plenary plat approval for the views va- phase six. At Coral Canyon subdivision located approximately Black Canyon Avenue Highland Parkway. With the standard twelve conditions and also. The condition that the trail be reworked to the backside of these lots. And that the developer can be given the opportunity to adjust lot sizes accordingly to make the trail work and be able to present that to city council.
Can we make that a condition or does is it a recommendation?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I I know the city council appreciates recommendations with precise conditions because it helps them know. The results of this commission and and the views that you saw from the public, the public process that you that you held.
So I guess to be more specific, Kathy, I'm talking about. Um, routing the trail. Rather than allowing the trail to be on the sidewalk through the community, routing the trail behind lots. Eighty nine through one hundred.
This is she'll. I second that.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Shield, individual voting Commissioner Shield.
I.
Musso.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. This motion passes unanimously. We send to city council for a recommendation for approval. Eldon, do you know? What the date will be that city council will hear this agenda item? So I can let the people here know.
There's a two week holdover. So it will be on the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth of July.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. For any of those who would like to attend the city council meeting when that item is addressed, you can at that time. Thank you for your attendance and your comments. I'm going to move to item number eight A. This is a conditional use permit. This is also a public hearing for approval from us as commissioners of a conditional use permit, C twenty one oh five. A request for a. Call location on an existing cell tower located at approximately fourteen sixty one. South Sand Hill Drive. The applicant is dish wireless. Is that what it is? Yeah, great. Staff, I'll turn the time over to you for a report.
Thanks, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit. To modify and expand the existing cell tower, which is located at fourteen sixty one south Sand Hill Drive. Applicant is proposing the addition. Of a fifteen foot by fourteen foot area, which will be chain linked off by a six foot fence to match the already existing fence. This area will be used to house uh, new dish wireless equipment. They are also proposing to run an underground fiber line from an existing manhole off of Sand Hill Drive to the expansion site. It will be extending power to the expansion area from the existing transformer. They will be placing an ice bridge between the proposed equipment and exists existing cell tower. And also installing an antenna system on the existing cell tower at approximately eighty five foot. Which is approximately fifteen foot lower than the already existing antennas. The zoning designation of this particular location is I one, industrial one. The surrounding zoning is I one to the northeast, south, and west. Staff has reviewed the conditional use permit application and finds it conforms to the wireless telecommunications. Facilities ordinance of the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve C dash twenty one dash oh five. Allowing modifications and an expansion to be made to the existing cell tower as shown in the exhibits with the findings and conditions as outlined below. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. I'll open the floor, commissioners, for any questions.
Isn't this the same as the one we did last week, two weeks, three weeks ago? I mean, I know it's not the same. It's on Sand Hill Drive, but.
It looks. Same same issue, just different location.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, very, very similar modifications uh, to the previous one we did last time.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Eldon, this is Commissioner Anderson. I and it's not necessarily pertinent to the. Discussion, but can we? Is there any way when they submit these documents that we can make this these vicinity maps be a little more? Uh, user friendly. And useful. I I I can see.
Somewhere somewhere in the southwestern corner of Utah.
I know. It'd be nice if we could. Have a little bit better information on that.
You don't carry a magnifying glass with you?
You know where organic construction is? Yeah.
Right in the middle.
This is a public hearing. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for anybody here in the chamber that would like to. Comment on this particular item. And please remember to state your name into the microphone for the record. I don't see that there's any comments from the public on this particular item. I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Musso so moved.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
Got a first and a second all in favor.
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed on this particular item. Commissioners, any additional questions or emotion on this item?
This is Commissioner Anderson. So we already, I mean, three weeks ago, we went through this whole entire thing on the last one. And I I think. I think what we what we. Our conclusion we came to then was was that. That, you know, it meets all the 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 city regulations and FCC regulations, but I will say I think we should strike. Safety from finding too, for the same reason that that we don't have the expertise to say whether it is or isn't. We're just following the FCC. Regulations allowing this type of general use.
I I don't mean to interrupt, but um, on the last one, it was help. And I did transfer that over to this one. We striked health, so it would mimic the previously one that you approved.
Plus, I I think it says that it will not, under circumstances of the. Particular case. Be detrimental or to the.
Well, before it said safety and health, now it just says safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I remember right, it was just a health.
What your definition of safety is.
Yeah, safety is referring to, you know, the foundations and the construction and the and the, you know, everything that holds it together that also is highly regulated. But yeah, we we've taken help out of there based on those comments.
With that, I think.
Yeah.
I think we're fine.
Yep, go for it.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve. C dash twenty one dash oh five request for conditional use permit to modify the existing cell tower located at fourteen sixty one south Sand Hill Drive. With. The uh. The one condition is noted.
Yeah, I would say the findings and the condition.
This Commissioner Bullock, I'll second that.
I've got a first by Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting Shield.
I.
Musso.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Bullock.
I.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item eight A. Has been granted a conditional use permit. At this time, commissioners, before we move to the next item, do any of you, would you like a brief break? Are we okay to go to eight B? You okay? I'm good. Okay. At this time, we'll go to item number eight B. This is also a conditional use permit, and it's also a public hearing. For C dash twenty one dash oh six request for the Washington Hospital. Located approximately Buena Vista Boulevard in Washington Parkway. The applicant is S C I, S C M, St. George LLC. Eldon, I'll turn the time over to you for staff report.
Thanks, Commissioner. The applicant is requesting approval of conditional use permit as stated. The hospital will consist of sixty thousand square feet of medical offices. And forty four hospital beds over a total of twenty three point six one acres. The hospital will be three stories in height with room to expand up to five stories. The city council previously approved a height waiver for up to ninety two feet. The hospital has identified future expansion areas and is proposing. To provide adequate parking for the expansion areas along with the main building. The parking is broken down as such. Four hundred and eighty stalls to be designated for professional medical offices. And one hundred and sixty stalls designated for the eighty beds. City code requires six hundred and forty parking stalls and the applicant is proposing six hundred and ninety one. The zoning designation at this location is C three and the surrounding zoning is open space to the north. C three to the east and south and C three to the west. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve. C twenty one oh six, allowing for the Washington Hospital. Located at the southwest corner of Washington Parkway in Buena Vista. Boulevard as shown in the exhibits with the findings and condition as outlined. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions that you have. There's a couple that I wrote down that I would like to ask the developer. He doesn't need to come up at this time, but if he could just be thinking of. The answers when we do get to him. I'm looking for a construction timeframe on the hospital. I'm interested in knowing what the maximum capacity is. After all expansions have been completed. And I was interested to know. What the use will be and why the land is being left between public road A and the Washington Parkway. If that's something for. Landscaping or if there's actually room for buildings there, I was interested in that. And so that's something I don't need the answer right now, but I'm interested in. In a few minutes. Commissioners, do you have any other questions that you'd like to either ask now or put on the record and we can get to him shortly?
My my question was the same with that. Open spaces that because I know when the drawings come out for bid, there was a medical office buildings off to that side. I believe. And I'm just curious if that's going to have enough parking. For the five story. And if this parking over here or if this will be parking. When they expanded the five stories, because they're starting with three and they're proposed to expand to five. Are the six hundred and something parking stalls going to be enough?
This, it it's we're kind of in a unique situation here in the time crunch to get this done and everything. Um, it's been a fluid process. We we've actually been speaking with the developer. And made some last minute revisions, which is shown before you here. And the parking is actually increased. With this. Uh, we just didn't have up time to update the report. Parking should come in with this revised plan right around uh, eight hundred stalls. Which is more than ample enough parking to cover all of the future means and and that. Uh, proposed future medical office as well.
Is this the one, Eldon, that we received in the email just not too long ago? This one right here on the screen.
That is the updated site plan. Yes.
All right. I didn't actually get that. It was in another meeting, but. Okay. And Eldon, maybe you know. Do you know the construction timeframe?
I do know. I do not.
You mentioned that we're, this is a fluid situation, there's, we're under the gun or there's a rush or something, who is that, what, where's the pressure coming from?
Well, obviously they want to get the hospital done sooner than later. And um, you know, start seeing patients.
Okay, I thought it was something that the city was, or something.
No, no, it's, it's the developer.
The developer, right? Yeah, okay. Uh, one is, well, yeah, commissioners, any other questions?
So this Commissioner Anderson, my only concern, and there is a. There is a uh, condition on here, but I think.
Commissioners, if you'll look in your packet at the updated exhibit, it's titled updated exhibit, that's the exhibit that reflects the new designs. With the added parking that was referenced.
My, my concern would be. And it, it's, it's condition number three. Just says, you know, all lighting within the project development will be, will be directed inward to the site, but I'm a little worried that. This hospital is right in the middle of, of residential and that, you know, we've got all these screens and everything, but. But you can have a ton of light pollution when you got something big and depending what kind of lights they have. Even if they're directed inward, I think that, you know, special consideration needs to be taken is what kind of lighting it is, so we don't end up making a gigantic.
It's quite a ways from.
I thought the same thing, can we go inward and downward?
Yeah, it just needs to be screened a little bit, I mean. I mean, some of these new streetlights now are so sneaky and bright that. I'm just, I just think the special emphasis needs to be placed on item three, that, that. It needs to be considerate to the surrounding area.
So.
It's a hospital.
So this has got different uses on several of its boundaries, are you, are you referring to the northerly properties? Because you know, you've got other commercial and interstate to the south, or just in general for the whole project?
The closest housing development is Perry Landings, and that's across a big field.
Still. I've just seen a lot of these things go in and the city, let's, let's whatever kind of lighting go in and before you know it. You know, you're blinding everybody or you're. Just saying it needs to be considerate with the lighting.
I, I agree, I think we need to control the light pollution.
Yeah.
So this is kind, this is Musso, and I just have a curiosity question, so if they can go up to ninety feet, and this is only going five stories. That's a little overkill, isn't it?
Look at the screen, look at your other, uh.
Your plan.
It's a screen, what's.
You have an elevation side.
Yeah, look at the elevation.
On your lot, it shows you your elevations where the ninety feet comes. So they have the mechanical screens up above, because they're gonna have all their elevators on top of that, what, top floor. And then above that, with all the mechanical units and everything else up there, just like the.
The fifth floor is sixty two foot eight. When they eventually build it.
Right.
And then they've got a big gigantic screen that's hiding everything from view. That can go up to ninety two.
Okay.
Or ninety, I guess.
Alright. I was just curious, because I didn't think.
I thought the same thing, I was like.
Or is it that tall? Yeah.
Eldon, would you mind pulling up the map, the most, the current map of the, um. The hospital itself that you had on the screen earlier that showed the, the roads around it Buena Vista?
Yeah, let me pull up this height elevation first, you guys, you're talking too quick for me, I'm not the quickest at navigating through this, but here's kind of the. The ninety two feet opposed to the sixty two feet, so three stories is going to come in just over sixty two feet. And then the, the five stories will be ninety two feet. Can you guys see this, you want me to zoom in?
Good, we can see it.
So this, the pink area is the proposed. You got top of screen here, ninety two feet. And then which, which other one did you want me to open up?
The one that you had up earlier that was the revised. Over, uh, revised map of the hospital, of the surrounding roads.
That's true.
This one?
Yes, so if I'm coming off of the freeway, the first opportunity that I'm going to have coming into the hospital is that entrance that also shares with the, um. They believe it's labeled ambulance, I can't see that far from here, but. Is that, is that okay, is that something that we should reconsider, I don't, I know that the second entrance down further south would be another. A full entrance in and out that people can use. I'm just wondering if, if that's a problem, or if that's something that's been addressed or even needs to be addressed. Because if me, if I'm coming to this hospital, I'm coming off the freeway, I'm going to drive right into the entrance that. Uh, has the ambulance entrance there as well.
That's, that's gonna be like the, just like the Dixie Regional Medical Center. Where you come off, you have your emergency exit for ambulances, your ER, your ER will be there. And then your main entrance looks like it's down here where this uh, roundabout is in front of the building.
Yeah.
Or you can come in from the other side and park over here.
Right, so I guess exactly where that red line is, my question is, for somebody's pay grade much higher than mine, that's okay? Okay. Alright. Commissioners, any other questions, uh, if you want to think about it for a little bit, if not, I'll open up for a public hearing. At this time, what I'll do then is I'll open this up for a public hearing. Anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this particular item, please come forward to the microphone and do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, if you can, and please state your name for the record, so we can put it in the notes, thank you.
Vicky Walters, I just want to know who's building the hospital? Is it our city, is?
I don't know that that can be disclosed, can it, I don't know.
You're asking.
Stewart Health.
Who is building it?
Yes.
Like the contractors and subcontractors?
Is that who's building?
It's not, I'd say.
Yes, thank you. Time we get somebody else.
Hey Vicky, believe it or not, I didn't know either, so thanks for asking that question, I don't know.
You don't know.
Stewart Health.
We need another one in.
Stewart Health.
Thank you.
You have two minutes left, you want to keep going? No? Not kidding, alright.
Vicky's referring to a, a sentiment that I think has been expressed for a long time around here. Um, folks of. Folks.
Oops.
I love it.
Well, I'm related to everybody in this town, because I have ancestors that had multiple wives, and it doesn't take much. Um, but the sentiment has been that folks would like another hospital offering in addition to IHC, and. I don't think Stewart Medical will build the building itself, but they'll hire folks that are trained to do that, and it'll be a Stewart Medical Hospital.
Anybody else in the chamber would like to speak to this item? Alright, at this time I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sheil, I second.
We've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the public hearing is closed, uh, at this time, if we could have the developer come up, if you wouldn't mind. And commissioners, I'll open the floor to ask additional questions as well. Construction timeframe, the maximum number of beds, once everything has been completed. Uh, there are two questions that I have, thank you.
Logan Scowley worked for Creff, which is the developer, Stewart Healthcare will be the operator of the facility. To go through the list of things that you asked, first of all, construction timeline, we're anticipating breaking ground in September. We're hoping to be open and operational in Q four of twenty twenty three, okay? Next question you had was total occupancy, um, with the full built out design. And it's reflected on this drawing, we'll have eighty impatient beds, licensed beds. The strip to the north, as you can see, has now been eliminated, part of the reason for that was they were such small areas to be able to be utilized for retail. Additionally, and this will speak to your lighting concerns, there's about sixty feet of grade variance from the bottom of Buena Vista to Washington Parkway. So our finished floor sits about thirty feet below that intersection, and so it made a. Issue and a challenge for viewability and access, um, but once again, the entire site will actually be depressed down, and so. Any lighting that's not indirectly will not be blaring up and shiny anywhere, because we sit depressed in the site itself. Um, also the parking count, the overall parking count has already been accounted for, full occupancy of both the medical office building, the future medical office building, and full occupancy of the building itself. I believe that answers all of your questions, is there any additional?
This is Commissioner Musso, so. Expansion for the hospital is vertical then, you're not, your footprint is pretty much limited to where you're at, right?
If you look, you can see the blocked out areas that show the horizontal expansion. Those are for future expansion for minor horizontal, and then yes, we are going from a three floor build out to a five story build out.
Once everything's built out, how many beds do you anticipate having?
Eighty, so at the first, the original build out, build out is forty four. So our current plan right now is to build out the first phase and go operational with forty four licensed beds.
To put it into perspective, my terrible rough math seems to be, it's about a third of the size of what we see today as residents with IHC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, at full build out.
Yes.
Alright. I don't have any other questions, John.
The only question I would have is, is that big enough?
Uh, probably.
Because eighty doesn't sound like very many beds, in all honesty.
It's a good start.
It's hard to quantify what the actual need is based off of our transient population that's here, because of the influx of winter visitors, secondary homes. So coming into a market, this is a strategic initiative, plain and simple. Going up against IHC is also a challenge, and so this is an opportunity for us to be able to explore the market and be able to see what the volume is. To see if there could be future expansion growth, or even potentially growth outside of this region. Okay, but it will be a substantial addition to the east portion of Washington County. Servicing not only Washington, but Leeds, Ivans, or not Ivans, but Leeds, Hurricane, Tocqueville, LeBirken, all the way up through Springdale and over into Colorado City.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson, how many, how many ICU beds will there be?
Give me one second. So we'll have eight critical care unit beds to be licensed, most of our other beds are also set up as moshi beds, so they can flex to a higher acute EFP.
And will those be in, all in phase one, or will they be half and a half?
In the face, phase one build out.
We're glad you're here, anything else you want to tell anybody listening, it's kind of a big deal that we're bringing the hospital to Washington?
We're just excited, uh, it's an impressive endeavor and we're excited to be here, and it's a great thing to be part of the community.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments amongst ourselves? And if not, I look for a, a motion on this particular item. This is something we're granting conditional use permit for, it's not something that we send to city council.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion. To approve C dash twenty one dash oh six request for conditional use permit. The new Washington Hospital located approximately southwest corner of Buena Vista Boulevard and Washington Parkway. With the nine conditions set forth, and that we pass it on to city council for, actually, no, we're not. Say it, we approve it.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second that.
I've got a first by Commissioner Anderson, I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Sheil.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Musso.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well, uh, motion passes, Logan, thank you, appreciate it, good luck. At this time, we'll move to, on our agenda, item number, again, just as reference, nine A has been tabled at the request of the developer, so we will hear that on July twenty first, if there's anybody here. Boy, I feel bad, if somebody waited here to hear that, and they're just hearing that we, we delayed that at the request of the developer, that'll be heard on July twenty first. At this time, we'll move to item number nine B. Nine, nine A, I said, I think I heard somebody say, is that ours, then the one that we're tabling is the, the lot, it's a. Uh, our, our agricultural area in front of the Stonehedge Development in Washington Fields. Where they were wanting to have half acre lots, and that has been tabled until the twenty first. What we will address on the agenda at this time is nine B, this is also a public hearing. For consideration and recommendation to city council for a zone change request, Z dash twenty one dash sixteen. To change from agricultural minimum of twenty acres to a PUD residential planned unit development. And open space located approximately forty three hundred South Washington Fields Road. The applicant is MST one five zero LLC. Staff, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Thanks Commissioner, the applicant, as stated, is requesting approval to change the zoning from twenty five point nine nine acres. At approximately forty three hundred South Washington Fields Road. The requested change is from the current zoning of agricultural twenty to the proposed planned unit development residential. This particular location has a general planned land use of planned unit development. The surrounding zoning is agricultural twenty to the north, open space. And C two to the east, agricultural twenty to the south, and R one eight to the west. The planned unit development request is for the purpose of developing the twenty five point nine nine acres into residential development. Consisting of one hundred and eighty three two story townhomes. The townhomes will range from approximately eleven fifty square feet to fourteen thirty square feet with two car garages. Eighteen foot wide by twenty foot long driveways and thirty three designated visitor parking stalls. The amenities for this development will include a basketball court area with two cabanas, barbecue area and lawn. With a grassed top lot area, three pickleball courts with two cabanas and lawn area. And also two grass basins with walking trails around the perimeter. Staff's major concern with the proposed project is the fact that the driveways bordering Weatherby Way. Will be such a large number and backing onto a roadway that is a master planned. Roadway to be a thoroughfare from South St. George on over to Washington Fields Road. And then on to State Highway seven. Staff is extremely uncomfortable with the high number of cars that will be backing into this curved master planned roadway. Staff asked for an alternate design to help alleviate this potential problem area, but the applicant wished to proceed with this design. Other than this, major concern, staff is supportive and the rest of the proposal. Staff would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z twenty one dash sixteen for the zone change request. From Act twenty to the proposed planned unit development residential on to the city council. If the high volume of driveways backing on to Weatherby Way were not so intense. And that would be based on the following findings below.
Thanks Eldon, commissioners, I'll open up the floor for questions, uh, from yourselves to staff.
So, this is Sheil, we have two items, is, is that what we're doing, we're, we got to change the zoning? Plus, we need to discuss the, the project, is that correct?
No, it's, it's one item, we're changing the zoning to PUD, and the applicant is, is ready to propose, uh, elevations. And would like to button everything up tonight. Does, does, if that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Eldon, can you restate that?
So currently it's agricultural twenty, uh, we, applicant's proposing to change it to a planned unit development residential. And with that, he's bringing forth these elevations here, you can see on the screen.
This design and this zone change are both included in what we're voting on?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the whole package. Alright, I'll tell you what I'll do, at this time, I'm going to have, uh, the questions from the commissioners held, and we'll talk to the developer in a minute. I'm going to open this up to a public hearing at this time, to see if there's additional questions or concerns from the public that the developer might want to address. Uh, this time, anybody in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, please come forward to the microphone and state your name. Thought everybody was here for this, alright. Uh, at this time, it doesn't look like there are any, are any citizens that would like to speak to this item, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Sheil, I propose we close the public hearing for nine B.
This is Bullock, I'll second that.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed on nine B. Opposed. Okay, the public hearing is closed on nine B. Commissioners, I'll open it back up for questions for staff or the developer.
I'll just chime in here real quick. This is Weatherby Parkway here. You can notice this curve. These, these homes here are the ones backing on to Weatherby Parkway, which is going to tie into Washington Fields Road. And I can switch the map to show the roadways as well.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Adam, before we get to you, the only concern I have, Commissioners, is I know several of you are newer to the commission. We had a project that was on Treasure Valley that's in very close proximity to this, where there's a townhome subdivision that came to us that wanted to have driveways back out onto Treasure Valley, and we've, we had them flip it around, and it's currently being built where the backyards are backing Treasure Valley. And with regards to what the staff has mentioned in their report, and Adam will speak to this, I agree with the, the staff concern about backing on to this roadway. So myself, that is a concern that I share with staff, and I've discussed that with Adam, and he has some things he'd like to speak about with us tonight. But if you have any other questions or concerns for Adam, feel free. We have him here.
Yeah, I have that same concern. I'm, I'm fine with the, the zone change, but I think, I think the design needs to be worked. I can't go against staff, so.
Adam, state your name for the record, and let's see what we can, what you can add to us discussion.
Yeah, so Adam Allen, American Land Consulting. I represent the developer. You know, and I apologize to staff, the way that that's worded, it sounds like we might not have listened to what they had to say. We have done some extent, we've done traffic study, we've done extensive work into this project. It is a residential collector, so it's not a major collector, it's not a major thoroughfare. St. George City has changed theirs to a sixty foot road there. As far as code goes, it is allowed to back on to have driveways on to these roadways. There is no restriction as far as that goes, as far as the traffic master plan goes from Washington City. Not that that's the only reason being. So we have a, a couple of things I'd like to talk about here. First is, I've, I've been coming to this planning commission for a long time now, and I've seen a lot of you guys here for a long time. And there's, there's a lot of things that we did put into this development. We do have some constraints, and we, and I'm going to go through the reasons why we did what we did. Sitting there, the staff recommended that we come back with an alternate design, and we declined and said that we wanted to move forward. And that's because we've already looked at a lot of alternate designs on this particular piece of property. Currently, so I'd just like to talk about some of the things that we've done. I've been involved, so Bush and Gudgeal, I was at Bush and Gudgeal for about five years. We were involved in a lot of townhome projects here. And this is the only thing that I can see here that is, it's a new issue that I didn't know was going to come up. These guys that I'm working with right here, they've been really great. They just want to build a nice product, is the sixty foot road issue, which, again, we didn't know was an issue until we went to turn in. But, so I've been involved in a lot of the projects. Vita Soul, for instance, is a townhome project we did when I was in front of the planning commission, city council, and staff. They wanted more open space. They wanted us to have our buildings not be so close together. We've, we've said, okay, we're adding a lot more open space to this, right? Our density is not a ton, right? We're only at seven dwelling units an acre. You know, most medium density townhome projects are around eleven dwelling units an acre. We worked on Cambria. Does everybody know what Cambria is? It's over there on Bullock Street. It's got the, it's got the little alleyway with the little driveways. Everybody parks out on Bullock Street and out there on eleven hundred East and Commerce Boulevard. When we brought that one done, and it's done now, now it was, hey, you know, those guys have no private space. They have no backyards. They have no driveways, nowhere to park. So each one of these units has at least a twenty foot driveway on Weatherby Way. We're at twenty five to thirty feet. They all have their own twenty foot dip backyard. You know, again, I brought up the less density Heritage Place. You guys all know where that's at. They had, the units were only ten feet apart. They wanted more density. We've, we've got less density. We're farther apart. Heritage Place in Vita Soul, it was also mentioned that they wanted to have more amenities, more spaced out amenities, and we've, you know, obviously tried to provide several amenities throughout this place, several things for everybody to do. This is an interesting piece of property. I have to line up the roadway, Weatherby Parkway, which actually is Weatherby Way now, because the Parkway apparently has to have a dividing median, has to line up with the road across the street. There is that hillside area that's to the south of us. We have a pinch point corner where we can only get so far in there. We have had a traffic study during the AM and PM peak hours in the, in the lookouts that he has to go to. There's going to be less than a car a minute drive by this, by this development, in and out. So and then during the off-peak hours, it's going to be significantly less than that. Forty two hundred South is a sixty six foot road. Eighty, thirty six fifty is an eighty five foot road. So most people, when they travel to go to Warner Valley, to go to the lake, especially once the new interchange is put in, are going to go down the bigger roads where there is no residences. There's no stopping. There's no stop signs, because that's where they're, they're meant to flow traffic to. We've, we looked at putting a alleyway behind these units, but I would have a seven foot driveway, and they would have no private space at all. And so we looked at turning the units, trying to turn them and come in sideways and have four or five little streets come in, and we lose about forty units. And in a density of only seven, it doesn't work for townhomes for what we're trying to do there. So, so there is a lot of stuff that we've put into this and a lot of thought behind it. We meet all site distance, all, all, everything that's on that sixty foot roadway. I have a statement I'd like to read from our traffic engineer. He's actually was the engineer for Lehigh City, and he's currently the engineer for Palmdale out in California, and he wasn't able to make it tonight. But his statement is during the AM and P, AM and P, PMP hours, the volume of residential collector road is only about one vehicle trip every minute in the peak direction towards Washington Fields Road in the AM peak hour and into the development in the PM peak hour, and much less in the off-peak times. From a traffic trade, safety perspective, there is no reason that direct access should not be allowed from the townhouses to this residential collector. Having direct access to the residential collector is appropriate and will reduce the speeds on the street. Lower speeds significantly decrease the severity of any traffic collisions and also make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists. So with it being the residential collector, that's, that's why we feel that we were putting that out there. The only other thing we could think of is maybe making that a four-way stop right there before it starts where that four-way at the southwest end is, is what we'd like to propose.
Adam, your traffic study that you're referring to, before you read that, one of my questions was, is he must be talking about Weatherby Parkway or Weatherby Way, correct? And he's saying one car per minute in peak hours?
Yep.
Not buying it.
Does that?
Not buying it.
Does that seem crazy to you?
The traffic, he's the traffic engineer. I mean, what do we?
But right now, yeah, you might be one car per unit right now, because it doesn't go anywhere. You know, that, the twenty four fifty coming from St. George across is what runs into this road. Okay, well, hell, no, I'm not going to drive on that road, because it doesn't go anywhere. Where, I mean, so, yeah, you're going to have one car per hour, or one car per minute, or whatever it is.
And they, they do have to look at future build out per what the cities say is going to be their traffic. St. George has reduced twenty four fifty to a sixty foot road to push people in front of the high school at forty two hundred South. That is now the sixty six foot larger collector for St. George City and Washington City. And he does have to do a lookout based on projections that are given per the cities, per national standards, per what growth rates are going on in the city, per what's in this subdivision, per what's planned in the future.
Okay, so name me one townhome development in either Washington or St. George, where you have fifty homes that are backing on to a sixty foot wide road. Give me one.
I don't.
You, you don't, because they don't exist. It's because it's a safety hazard.
Let's all take a deep breath here and understand that with all due respect, Adam, we're just trying to wrestle with it, because as commissioners, this isn't, we don't do this stuff for a living necessarily. Some of us do. I mean, I don't. So I rely heavily on staff and their recommendation to us. And so when I read something like that, however it was worded, how it was, that causes me to go, well, hey, hold on a second. How can we make this work? And then when I, when I heard you mention the traffic study, I thought the same thing. I thought, how is that, how was he getting that? You know, and I'm not going to say that it's not right, or it's whatever. I don't doubt it, but I'm thinking that's, it just didn't seem accurate to me, and that's why I was asking that question. With regards to Weatherby Park, Weatherby Way, if I remember correctly, back when we were approving this, it was either this parcel or the one to the north of it. And I, I believe that you were the representative there at the time. The connection to Washington Fields Parkway will be completed as part of this project first. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was accurate. And I, again, with all due respect, I just want to make sure you understand what our concern as a commission is, is our staff is telling us to have major concerns with it, and we just turned that one around.
My question would be, is, is there any, besides they don't like it or the opinion they have on it, is there any backing to their concern? All they told us is they have concern. They think there's going to be a lot of traffic on there. We've provided studies that say there's not going to be a lot of traffic on there to help alleviate that concern. Besides, and, and I'm not saying they're wrong or right or indifferent. I'm, I'm asking the question here of, of, you know, why, why, what is it this, the concern, other than that they're just saying we don't like it?
I'm shooting from the hip. This is Sheel, but a sixty foot road's going to increase speed. And I think that's probably some of their concern.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's why the traffic engineer was saying it's good to have driveways and stuff off of there, because then people don't feel like they can cruise just down that road.
But they're still going to sixty feet. Maybe it needs speed bumps. I don't know.
One of the, just as a, as a nearby resident, as, when I think my way through this, what this would look like fifteen years from now, and this road on the south end connects, and it connects in, where, where would I ever use this road coming out of Stewie Farms? I would personally use it headed over to Pickleball, to Little Valley. I would probably take this to cut off as much as I could. That's where I would use it. So I'm, I'm trying to think of, well, what's the use really going to be in that area, and what's the traffic really going to look like? When we went through this with the, the Treasure Valley complex, there are homes that back up to Treasure Valley, and that was one of the things that the developers at the time said, hey, their home's already there, but it's not townhouses. The density was a lot less with the homes. And I've watched the traffic on the Treasure Valley Road, and I'm thinking through what the traffic studies were on that and what I see currently. I see, I, I'm, I'm glad we turned it around, and I'm, I'm not sure, I, I want so badly to say, hey, I think this is great, and I agree with the traffic study. I personally just would respectfully wish I had more information on how that traffic study came to be that, because I, I don't want to say I disagree with it, because I'm not the expert, but boy, is that, it's hard for me to personally believe. It's like, I'm starting to understand a little bit more when I'm hearing what you're saying. I want you to build a product. I want this product right there up against the mountain. But I do have a hard time in my own mind in the future with people backing on to that road. That's, that's where I'm, I'm trying to wrestle with it and trying to get to it, but that, that's just where I'm at, so.
Okay, no, and, and I, and I respect that. So my question would be, everybody's worried about speed, so if we put a stop sign right there, write a four-way stop sign, that would make people come to a stop.
And I, I would, if I was to use that road, I would hate seeing stop signs on it, because then I wouldn't use it. But that's probably what you want, right?
That's, that's the idea, because it's a residential collector, not an actual collector. We don't want a bunch of people driving down those roads. So if there was a stop sign there, it would help alleviate that thing. The other thing is, is, so, you know, I mean, it was kind of proposed during staff that we do put a, you know, an alleyway behind those units, but then we're going to have a parking problem.
Was there a consideration at all to have them just flip the driveway around like we did in another subdivision, where they enter through what, what now is listed as their backyard, where that's like a common driveway for those units that go into their?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. So then that, that backyard would then become not a backyard anymore, right? Then there would be a thirty foot alleyway in there, and with current setbacks, I'd have about seven and a half foot driveways on each side. And so then people would just be parking out on your sixty foot road.
So it's not operable that way then?
Yeah. And so that, that's the reasoning behind not doing the alleyway there, right? So then, then it would be the same kind of scenario.
Are you talking about an alleyway between the hillside area and that, and that southern?
No, in between the two sets of units. Yeah, right, right there, in between those units, to make sure that there was no driveways going off on to Weatherby Parkway. Because that was, that was what the solution was, I believe, for the one up on Treasure Valley.
Do you ever run, do you ever run a scenario, and maybe it won't work, just an idea, where these units right here flip the other way? You had your collector, or you had this road here, come up through here, and then these two back together? And then you had another small road like this between the hillside area here?
Yeah, and I've left the hillside area kind of where it is, just because I'm not one hundred percent confident in the grading I have right there. There is up to about twenty feet of cut back there, so we want to minimize what we're doing back there.
Would that work? Assuming you could, you could work out the grading and so forth, would that work to be able to do road here and road here and flip, flip all these? So then you get driveways coming this way, and you got two driveways through there?
And that's a possible scenario that it could possibly work right there, but then up front there, I have some units that.
Can you make a one-way road?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, those units wouldn't work, and so would the, the other ones facing Weatherby Parkway. To get those to work, I wouldn't have a park area in there.
What if you took some of these? But on where the park area is, and there's this park area over here, just to reduce the number.
I, yeah, I don't, there's just not enough space back there to do that meat fire space turnarounds, those driveways. So we, we have run a bunch of different scenarios. This was the best thing we came up, we could come up with, but.
This, Commissioner Anderson, does this, does this road have to connect down here to the existing, or, or can it be just a, a road, like a main entrance road for this community? I mean, you could still.
Planned. City has it planned.
No, I know that, but if, if the city's concern is, is through traffic here.
I guess what I'm getting at is, can this be your main road just to here, and it, you know, it stops like right here or whatever? You can still get through by, you know, coming this way, but they're smaller roads, et cetera, so it doesn't become a, a big collector that has to stay sixty feet through here.
I think, I think as of right now, because it is on the master plan, I have to have it be a sixty foot all the way through.
Again, I guess I'll, I'll ask that then. I mean, if, if, I mean, if, if staff is, you know, they say they have major concerns with, with this, and the major concern is because they're requiring that that road continues through as a sixty foot. I mean, isn't there some sort of, of workaround that we can do here where, I mean, it just seems like if, if the city's insistence on it being a sixty foot through road is causing the problem.
So if we reworked it and said, bring it through at a smaller road, the staff's recommendation would be for, for rejection on the basis that it doesn't comply with the general plan, the traffic general plan. And so the staff's concern on this one, you'll notice how it was stated, is more of a health and safety concern, which, which really falls in your camp. If it's a technical concern, you'll find that staff will be specific on their, on their statement and, and would be, instead of recommending with concerns, it would be a, we, we recommend that you reject this, the proposal.
From a legal standpoint, it's my understanding, is that on that sixty foot wide road, you can have access?
Yeah.
But there isn't any place, there isn't any place anywhere that has that density of access.
Like Thad's saying, the, the, the health and safety concern is, that's, that's our job, and that's where this is an issue. And I'm just saying, it, it's just, there's got to be some sort of workaround where the city's mass, you know, the city's transportation plan is, is what's making it difficult to make, you know, to, to develop this piece of property for that reason.
Yeah, usually projects with this density aren't so long and narrow. I think that's really the, that's really your issue is,
right?
This many units on that narrow of a piece, you could maybe bank Weatherby Way up to the north and then scoot everything below it, right? But whether the staff like that proposal in, in light of where the other intersections are, I don't know. But, but yeah, the challenge here is it's a lot of units with a long, narrow piece that, that, that road is planned to go through.
How big are these units?
They're twenty five by forty five, twenty five by forty six, two stories, two car garage. I guess my, my question would be if, and this is just a question for staff or anybody, if, if it was actually a health and safety concern, not that it's, I'm not saying that it's not a valid point to discuss, would, would they not have said in, you know, like the traffic studies that were done for the city, saying this is a residential collector, you can't have townhomes front these roads? And they only say you can't have townhomes or anything front these roads once you get to a sixty six, right? And they've put a lot of time and effort. Right? And they've put a lot of time and effort in studies into making those as well.
Yeah, but if it was also cutting driveway, wouldn't need a commission of citizens, right? I mean, that, that's why they exist, is to look at things like this and make decisions based on the community's concern for, for your proposal.
I agree.
Adam, can we? Could you take Weatherby Parkway? Down along the hillside area? And out so it kind of does its thing and doesn't become the main road through the community and then. You know, you could bring that, that.
It's driven here maybe, but these two together. But that one to there and this just becomes, you know, one of these smaller private roads. And Weatherby Way comes down and skirts along. You have to put some retaining walls in or whatever, but. But you still get Weatherby Way.
But you still have a whole bunch of townhomes backing on to.
No, you have.
Backing on to it.
No, you have all these townhomes kind of like they are where they're, they're, they have private roads and, and Weatherby Way skirts behind the backyards.
Those ones move up and you take the main road and turn it in. Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying, put Weatherby Way.
Against the hillside.
More through the hillside, open space area and, and try to get it out of your community. I'm just trying to brainstorm here.
Yeah, no, and, and so there's, so the, the reasoning behind where it's at is based on just, uh, you know, like. The amount of perpendicular, you know, we gotta be perpendicular for so long on certain roads. Got to have certain radiuses, things like that. So to make that curve come around, that's about where we'd have to make that curve and then it would curve down into it. And so it just cut right through the middle of all those townhomes. Um, the other thing with pushing it to the north is there is an NRCS line there. That's the, the federal NRCS line that we're moving out of the way and into that roadway. And we can only move it so far before we start running into issues with, with length and, and different things, making sure that we maintain flows. There's a lot of different things going on, on this property that's just, it's a little bit different than.
See, and then one of the benefits of the way it's designed is. You'll notice they don't have to have side roads for a whole bunch of driveways, right? And so that's one way that they accomplish density. And so it's just a, it's a piece that. Because of what it is and how it's shaped is, is a challenge.
And you, you said, are these, how many bedrooms typically are these? Two to three?
I think they're three bedroom.
It's set up to fourteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, Todd Smith, I'm the developer. So, uh, commissioners, really appreciate your time. Thank you, like, totally spitballing this with us. Like, you can see here that we're genuinely trying to do a top-notch product. We're way low on density. We're using high-quality materials. We're trying to make, you know, double-wide driveways. We don't want anybody parking on the street. We're trying as best we can to make all the economic factors work with the safety factors. With all due respect, you know, the staff recommended that we get a traffic study done by an individual. Whose life revolves around traffic. He is an expert in the field of track, uh, traffic at your direction. We hire this guy to give us a report and, um. I, I'm an electrician. I don't shoot from the hip as it relates to heating and air conditioning. I, I speak as an expert as it relates to electricity. So I do appreciate your opinions and I mean it when I say. You know, thank you for trying to work through with this with us. Maybe, maybe a second opinion, um, from another expert. I mean, his, his quote speaks to the value of having driveways for the sake of limiting speed. Um, so that, that's one item. We're totally happy to do speed bumps. Um, just from right here, I can see that we could immediately take the units on the north side of that road and flip those around, maybe lose one or two there. We're just, we're, we're looking to give a little, take a little, but changing this to alleyways. Dramatically impacts the effect and you will see cars all the way down the road parked. Evening, night, it's, it's going to happen. You, you got a seven-foot driveway. Where are you going to park your vehicle? It's not even seven feet long, you know, so anyway, just please consider those factors. Everything about this project says that we're trying more amenities, smaller density. We are trying to make a top-quality product and enrich Washington. We're putting in the trail all the way through. To connect from the master plan railways that are on the St. George and other side of Red Crimson. So, um. But thanks again so much for your consideration and, and your, your ideas here. But two immediate proposals would be speed bumps and then. We're willing to flip those units around. So is that a? Yeah, I, I mean, I think we'll, I think there'll be some give and take there, but, um, I, I think that's an option to, I mean, that's, uh. Is that fourteen units? Yeah, so that will cut down, but, but, uh. We, we hired an expert and, and I appreciate your opinions. He speaks to the value of having driveways on this road. So thanks so much for your time.
Adam, got a question for us. This is Commissioner Anderson. So. I think to make this work, we've got to find a way to at least reduce the number of driveways on there. And, and I think possibly speed bumps, stop signs, maybe a combination of the two.
So, so both speed bumps and stop signs can't be guaranteed. Uh, city staff may, may recommend a rejection on either one of those.
Because it's such a big street.
There's, because there's traffic standards and traffic code that's, that's internationally adopted. Um, and so. For example, my favorite one is when the traffic engineer. The traffic engineer is always, you know, several years behind when the stoplight comes in, right? The citizens always think the stoplight was needed years before the traffic engineer. Right? And, and so sometimes it just is what it is, but there's no question that they look at the use and the connecting roads and, and make a projection based off of professional training. But yeah, things, things like speed bumps aren't determined at this body. Those are technical determinations. Stop signs, the same. Brandon will be able to talk more specifically about that.
Brandon Wright, Public Works. I'm just gonna lay out what we, what transpired this afternoon. Commissioner Musso came down to my office to discuss this late, earlier this afternoon. I tried to explain to him and I had Mike Shaw, Public Works Director, come in. Per our approved standards. That has been adopted by Washington City. This is allowed. You can have access, driveway access on a sixty-foot road. We have to, as staff in Public Works, we have to go. With what has been adopted by a standard. We, we have a traffic study that came in by Jay Nelson. Uh, he's a professional like they've mentioned. We can't, we can't use our opinion. We have to go by what is, what is out there for us. He, he has. When this was approved, this whole development was approved, this P O, P D. It actually came in inside the traffic study that this was in it. This was considered in that traffic study at the time he did this. There has been, as, um. Mr. Segmiller said, there is been some incidents, incidents that, um, trap, uh, stop signs and speed bumps. Have been recommended and put in place, uh, Countryway with the Red Waters Development. City Council made that, that call. They said they would like to see. Four-way stops on Countryway when that was approved to slow that traffic down. It was going out to the landfill. So. I just need you to know where we're at with, with Public Works. We're not basing this on anything with an opinion. This is strictly off of what has been adopted with the standards.
So this is Commissioner Anderson, I guess. Maybe it's a question for Thad. Wh- whether or not, you know. Whether or not we can have, have stop signs or not, I mean, we can still recommend that there's a stop sign because of our concern here and then it goes to city council, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, you can make, you can make whatever recommendations.
I think, I think that you need to have something like that. And I, so my, my big conundrum here is it. Is that the staff report says staff, you know, has major concerns. And yet, both you, Thad, and Brandon, Public Works are both saying that, that it's allowed and, and they don't have concerns. So, so what is it?
So if it wasn't allowed per standard, they wouldn't say approve with concerns about the standard. They would say, we recommend denial. They're expressing concerns about the, the fact that that many driveways are backing onto a road. And it, it is allowable per standard. But this is not a standard application. They're seeking a zone change from straight zoning. This wouldn't be allowed in straight zoning. Right? This wouldn't be allowed in the current zone designation. So they're asking you. For special allowances and rights for a project. And in that request, especially as a P U D, you get to, you get to have opinions. Uh, traffic engineers give their opinions on traffic law and traffic projecting. Planning commissioners give their opinions on city planning and neighborhood planning.
No, no, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's a little misleading if, if the report says major concerns, but then. Staff gets up here and says, we don't, it, it's allowed. We don't have concern. That's all. I'm just saying it's a little bit.
He's not saying he doesn't have concerns. I think he's saying it's, it's legal based upon. What the, what the ordinance says.
No, I know, but I'm just saying if there are major concerns, who is speaking to the major concerns here from staff?
So thus far, staff has all said that. Standard is a traffic standard, right? So those type of driveways backing onto that, that type of a road. Falls within our current traffic standard. This is more than just a traffic application. This is a P U D application. This is a zone change. And, and the city has the ability to. Restrict things beyond their standard.
I'm not trying to pick a five name. I'm just.
Let me answer, well, I'll. Brandon Wright with Public Works that, um. Like when they brought this into staff developer meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, right? Drew Ellerman was the one that had the concerns that came right off. Uh, I voiced my concerns, what I told you guys here tonight about that, that this does, it is allowable. He's the one that expressed his concerns about having all these driveways on, on the, uh, on Weatherby Way. That he staffed, that's, that's where it's coming from. That's where it started from. That's, to answer your question, that's what it is.
Yes, thank you. That, that's what I wanted. I'm just saying, when, when you read in, in, in here, if it just says staff, you know, has major concerns. That a lot of times people are just going to automatically say, well, we're going to vote against it because they have major concerns. And I'm just saying. You know, Public Works, obviously, it wasn't their concern. And that, that's what I want to know. Who, whose concern was it? That's all I'm getting at.
Commissioner Brandon did mention a good point. If I can just kind of highlight the, the major concerns here, you know, we're not in opposition to this project. It is a great project. They have many good amenities. They're bringing in, uh, quality product like the applicant did say. It's. Um, the, the major concerns that we have is the bend in the roadway with. The, the driveways backing on to their, their townhomes and. Uh, from our experience, townhomes primarily bring in younger families with, with younger children. And that's concerning to us.
Adam, I have a question for you now. Sorry, now that I went off on a tangent there.
Absolutely.
Um, is it possible where you've got the park area here? And, and like he'd say, I mean, you got park area here, you got park area here, park area here.
Yep.
Are there any of those park areas that you could replace? Along, you know, Weatherby Parkway and move, move units. I mean, it looks like you could move at least an entire building to where this park is and, and then put that park over on Weatherby.
We could move units into there, so the.
Just so you can reduce the amount of drive, driveways off.
Thinking behind that was that the kids and the people were not going to be playing right next to the road. I was trying not to put the play areas next to the road.
Yeah, so I mean, we can move those into there if the driveways are more of a concern, uh, than, than the playing next to the road. I don't know. What are you saying? It's just an idea.
So, one of the things commissioners that I'm thinking about as we're doing this. On, in my tenure, we have set a precedence in asking another development within a quarter mile of this to do exactly what we're asking them to do. I'm hesitant to change the road to fit the development. I'm more interested in changing the development to fit the road. That is a major road on a, on a transportation map. What was said earlier, I agree with and wanted. Just in my comments to the commissioners is that our job is to offer an opinion to city council. About what we think of this project and. We all have our opinions at this point. I know I have mine. It doesn't necessarily mean I'm for or against the project. I ha, I have a concern. My opinion is that this is a no vote from me. Not because of the project, but it's because of what I've said earlier. I voted on a project where I made him, I didn't make them, but the city. Took recommendation from the commissioners to change it around. I share that concern still on this project. I wish it was an easier one to deal with, but my opinion is going to be, we've got to get. All of it off of that road. I'm not, I'm not in favor of putting stop signs or speed bumps on a major road. I'd rather development change. Um, that's where my vote is. That's where I'm at. So we can discuss that as much as we need to.
Can I make one comment? So as soon as we get down to the end of the development there, there will be another four-way stop on that road. It's not, because it's not a major, it, it is a bigger road being a residential collector, but it's not a major road. They don't try to put stop signs on.
I didn't actually know that. Thanks for telling me.
So yeah, just as soon as you get down over there, as soon as you get to Medallion, four-way stop.
So throwing a four-way stop right there in the middle, um, wouldn't be completely out of character for the area.
No, no, and then there's going to be, uh, I don't, I think that there's another three-way stop as soon as you get across over there because of the Crimson Cliffs. Uh, where they bring in the high school. Um, so, so.
All right. Adam, thanks for that. I appreciate it. Uh, again, these comments all go to city council and they have a chance to review. The best we can do is recommend our opinion and that's what we're here to do.
This is Commissioner Musso. What's? What's available to do or what can be done? Doesn't necessarily mean what should be done. And I just, I have real concerns of fifty. Homes backing onto a sixty-foot wide road when we have no precedence anywhere. That anybody can cite of that many houses. Backing onto a, a sixty-foot wide roadway in that short of a distance. You know, we, we looked at Treasure Valley and Treasure Valley has, has a number of homes. But we counted how many there were and I think there might be eight. And then you run into the situation exactly what, what Commissioner Hanson was referring to where. The backside of those homes are all along the, are all along the road and not, not the front side. And, you know, of this project, they have twenty-seven percent of their homes, they're going to be on, facing Weatherby Parkway. And it comes down to a matter of, you know, what should we do and what could be done? And I just don't see it. That's a viable option, in all honesty. And, and bar the traffic studies, bar everything else, I'm looking at common sense. And common sense tells me that that's not a good idea.
I, I would like to point out, one of the things I was thinking of is Camino Real is a sixty-foot road. Nothing backs up against it. But it will never be a big thoroughfare because things changed.
And you have, and you have ten and twelve thousand square foot lots.
Right, but, but I'm, I'm saying that even in the future, twenty years from now, there'll never be a large amount of roads. Just because it was a master plan road does not mean that it was going to come to fruition, that that's the road. Because just like that, where they've changed where the high school is, a lot of this was based on where the high school used to be. And they've moved where that was. And so we've not updated the master plan since then. Um, and, and so there are a lot of factors that go into changing these things as the future goes on. And again, it is a residential collector. Um, I know everybody keeps saying a major master plan road. It's only ten feet wider than the normal road. It actually only has five more feet of asphalt. Than a, the roads that are fifty feet wide. And so it's not that much bigger of a road. My question would be, and this is just a question, is would, would it be preferable? That we had an alleyway in between those two lots with seven-foot wide driveways?
No, but I think that there's another plan that you could come up with, if really push to it. Like, again, I don't want to fit the development to the road.
And, and we've looked at all those plans. We just, there's, as you come into it and you start rotating them and doing those things without. I mean, as again, it's a low-density townhome project as it is. And so, you know, start turning those things, you start losing forty units, all of a sudden it's not viable anymore.
And maybe it's not.
Right, that's easy to tell the landowner when, when it's their property, right?
And I understand. It needs to also conform with what the city needs and what the needs of the people and everything else are and safety concerns.
Right, and we've addressed all the safety concerns.
So there's other factors that P U Ds can consider. You know, we're kind of just looking at a two-D model here. You could increase your structure size and accomplish more density and, and change your driveways by doing that, right? And so.
And again, it's a cost factor, people wanting to buy a condo type of thing.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting what you do. I'm just telling you that there's more options than, than what's presented here. And, and those are frequently considered in, within P U Ds. And so this commission has the duty to look at them and, and as citizens of the community. Make a recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, like I was saying, gentlemen, that's the best we can do is offer recommendations to the council. Yeah, like I was saying, gentlemen, that's the best we can do is offer recommendations, city council, let them discuss it. An up or down vote isn't the, the approval or death knell in this to me. The city council has a chance to look at our notes, review this themselves and make that determination.
So just, just in the way of understanding, so we, we have single family that, that is on both sides of this road going all the way back out to, so is the thought that obviously that's already been approved, we're constructing there. So the, the number of units, I, I don't know off the top of my head what, what we have number of units, but we have the same exact issue there and, and it wasn't an issue. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand all the pieces, you know, so does it, does it become less safe as you, as you have more units here than, than the units coming all the way up that road? Like is someone going to drive at a certain speed and then all of a sudden speed up?
So I'll answer that because you're just kind of arguing with the staff's recommendation. Staff said they have two curves on each end. And then a bunch of driveways in between those two curves that create visibility concerns with that many driveways. And so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think, I think the reasoning is to your question is that you have four times as many driveways coming off in the same space as a residential. That's so I got question. Adam, I guess for you. I mean, do you? So we tried to brainstorm a lot of things here, but it seems like, seems like the answer is that there is no, like this is, this is this. I guess my question is if, you know, if, if it gets voted as no, and then it goes to city council and they vote no. I mean, is like your whole, whole project kaput? Or do you have any sort of ideas? That's what I guess.
And that, and that's the whole thing. It's like, we don't, we don't know what to do with it.
Would you rather have a table and, and brainstorm some ideas or or risk that it gets voted no? I'm just saying, I'm just.
Yeah, we, we appreciate the, so, um, you know, no, there's no such thing as kaput, right? There's some things that are economically viable and not viable. You know, uh, the demand for this type of housing is, is ridiculously high right now. So we're trying to serve as many affordable type units as possible in the area. So, uh, to, to your question, if it's no, um, no disrespect to the council, but I, I think we'll probably proceed and see if the city council, since we're talking about opinions, maybe they have different opinions as to our experts letter. So we probably will proceed, no disrespect to the council. We appreciate your input and, and legitimately, I, I hundred percent mean it when I say thank you. It's not your role to sit up and spitball ideas, but thank you so much for having done so. But I think we'll probably proceed and, and see if their opinions vary. You know, I appreciate, I appreciate Brandon's candor. This does meet city code. It does meet requirements. And, and, you know, that's point to you are the body who's employed here to offer your opinions and we appreciate you having done so. We may have different opinions. I, I didn't mean to be argumentative. I was just trying to understand how the single family homes, which I, I don't think we're talking about four times the units. We probably have thirty ish between both sides of the road, down on that other end of the road. So in quantity, we're probably talking maybe fifteen or twenty five percent more, but nevertheless, thank you so much for your, your concern and thank you so much for offering your opinions. And, and we, 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 we can agree to disagree on this point. And, and our expert has his point and ultimately this comes back to your stand and, and thank you for your service in the community.
Yeah, Todd, Commissioner Sheehan, we agree with you a hundred percent. Like I hate to send you away as denial, but go fight your case in city council. I welcome it. I mean, I hope you, all the success. They're the ones that are going to make the decision for sure. Then I do, I'm not offender any. I, it's a tough one. I, I can't sit up and say, yeah, you guys go ahead and do it because then they'll shut it down, you know, and it goes the other way. And so I'll let them make the decision, let them know my opinion, the best we can do.
So I, I don't know if it's, you know, staff recommended it with concerns, potentially you could do the same thing. I, I'm, I'm not trying to word your motions for you, but if this is the sole concern and we're all recognizing that this is an opinion matter. You know, I, I don't know if your approval could exist with language that says to the city council, the, the, the planning commission's opinion is this, it meets all codes and we have major concerns. Maybe your motion could include the same language.
So the planning commission isn't here for issuing opinions. You issue recommendations based on your concern for the community. The city council will see an identical recommendation from staff. Um, so what was presented to this board will be presented to that board. The difference is in between the two, we've got all of the process that happened here tonight and the city council gets to review all of that as they prepare to make their decision.
Right, I see. I, I would almost, I, I would say that you said like maybe ten minutes ago that, that they are here to offer their opinion. Did I misunderstand something?
No, but you're trying to make a point out of the word of opinion? And, and this isn't.
You said the word opinion.
I'm, I might've been the one that did that as well.
But, but the issue here is they don't issue opinions to the city council. Their job per city code is to issue a recommendation or not. And of course, every person brings their, their accumulation of experience and opinions to add to the votes that they make in their recommendations, but this board is not an opinion board. They can pass some things without any city council review. They've done some tonight. Other things they give recommendations to the city council. So my words are looking at the specifics of Washington city code and what they send to the city council.
Okay, so potentially you could make a recommendation instead of issue an opinion. So thanks so much, gents.
Gentlemen, any other questions that you have for anybody here tonight?
So this Commissioner Anderson, I'm not, so I just wanted to, I guess, state my thoughts here. I'm not opposed to having the layout as it is. Uh, I mean, one thing that Adam said is correct, that there's not a lot of difference between a sixty foot right away and a fifty foot right away, very little. And to answer your question, I don't know of any sixty foot that have townhomes on them. Um, but I've built plenty of them that dump onto fifty foot. And, and he's right, there's about five feet of difference. So it's, I'm building some right now, some townhomes on, on the, have driveways onto a fifty foot. With that said, I, I think it's a lot of townhomes, you know, in a small area and it, it all comes down to what's, what's, what's the traffic really going to look like, right? And to that point, we have to go by the, you know, the traffic study that it's not our job to be the traffic. To, to claim that we're the traffic engineer, you know, if he says that it's sufficient, then we should take his, you know, his educated opinion as such. I, I think that it could, I think that it could work, but I, I, I do think you have to have some means of slowing down the traffic. And I think that, that you have to recommend, you know, four way stop or, or speed bumps or something. You know, and, and that would be up to city council, but I, I don't think it's worth killing the project. I just think that, that anyway, that's my opinion.
It's not dead, no matter what this, what this commission does. This is one of those issues. I think what you need to figure out is if there's a motion that can pass.
I'll take a stab at it. This is Sheel. I would just make a motion that we deny this application to approve the zoning of approximately twenty five point nine nine acres located approximately forty three hundred South Washington Fields Road. From the current agricultural twenty acre minimum, a twenty zoning to a proposed planned unit development.
Just to clarify that you recommend denial, correct?
We recommend denial on this particular, and we recommend denial of the development. Right?
Based on, yeah.
Based on, based on, uh, the roadway and, and access points off of the driveway, driveways onto the roadway, onto a major roadway.
The number of units, basically.
Well, we're, I'm, I'm recommend, recommending. Right?
In addition to the staff concerns.
Yeah, in addition to what the staff was concerned. So.
This Commissioner Musso has seconded.
I've got it first by Commissioner Sheel. I've got a second by Commissioner Musso. Individual voting, Commissioner Sheel.
Aye.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Nay.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm an aye as well. The motion did not pass. This will be sent to city council.
All right, the, the motion did pass.
The motion did pass for denial. This will be sent to city council as a recommendation for denial. And Kathy, do you have sufficient notes as for the reasoning for denial for the minutes? Or do those need to be restated?
Um, I have that the access, the driveway onto the roadway and in addition to the staff's concerns.
So, okay, thank you.
Too many.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you for coming. Uh, this time we're going to move on to item number.
Sorry, can I ask one, one clarification question before I walk out the door real quick?
Sure.
The denial is based on it being to Weatherby Way, right? So if I came back with it not being on Weatherby Way and there was an alleyway in between those units, would you recommend approval?
Nope, I can't answer that question. Legal will stop that one.
We'll stop this. So what is, most, a lot of the times we've gotten.
A motion has already passed on your application and I'm not going to let you ask variations after that motion's passed. Well, I don't know what they would have said, but the meeting wasn't noticed for those variations.
Can I go ahead and, and stop me if you need to, Adam, before you leave, what I would recommend that you get with Drew? Because obviously you know him, that's, this is where that may be improved or decided or changed that's in a, in a favorable light to help you in your quest at city council. It, it wouldn't be here. It, you can do it whenever you want. I would suggest maybe trying something, city council, whatever you want to do. You've done it long enough. I'm not suggesting this is in a negative thing. It's just, that's just what we thought. Please do so, but yeah, we'll go from there.
So commissioners, I, I'm not opposed to trying to find solutions, but once you've passed a motion on the agenda item, you're done with the agenda item. The, the commission has made an action and we, we have to kind of, we have to stop at that point. If the motion hadn't been passed, we could have kept talking.
Oh, he's doing this.
All right, gentlemen, we are going to move on to the last item on the agenda this evening. Uh, thank you all for sticking around.
Sorry.
We can take a break if you want. There's been plenty of meetings where I feel your, I feel your pain. Number nine C, this is a tabled item from May nineteenth. It's a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council. A zone change request Z dash twenty one dash eleven to change from P U D planned unit development to R A one half residential agricultural located approximately ten fifty south, eight hundred east. The applicant is Telegraph U P N L, Kent Hydamon. I'll turn the time over to you, Eldon for staff. Report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, this item was tabled at the May nineteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. And the planning commission, again, on the June second, twenty twenty one meeting of the planning commission, allowing for the commissioners to know the vote of the property owned by the city directly to the south of this proposed zone change. The city council unanimously approved the zone change of the property. Let me find my spot. I apologize. The city council unanimously approved the zone change of the property boarding on the south from agricultural twenty to the zoning of residential one half acre minimum. This particular location has a general plan land use designation of low density residential, which allows for the R one ten and R one twelve or greater zoning districts. The surrounding zoning of this parcel is R A one half to the east, agricultural twenty to the south, R one ten to the north and planned unit development to the west. Staff has no concerns with this proposed zone change as outlined. And staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z twenty one dash eleven for the zone change request from planned unit development to the proposed residential agricultural half acre minimum onto the city council based on the following findings below. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
So we, we're trying to make a record as well. If you want to speak, ma'am, we have to come, but, but you're not invited to speak yet, but the, the recording needs to be accurate as to speaking as well. The commission will, will try and answer that question as they discuss though.
What does this mean? How's that good? Uh, I kind of had the same question. I've just, maybe somebody in the room that, or staff that has a kind of a history of this property could explain and help me understand a little bit more about maybe what the proposed future of this will look like, given the, uh, the approval of city council, what's transpired to this point. Does it, our house is going to be going in there? What is this going to be used for?
So I, I can speak to the history that's recent, uh, since this, this process was began. The city's property to the south there was recently conveyed to an owner that's in common with this one. The city's understanding is that this lot and this, and the lot that was just recently acquired will be submitted for a plan that, that is, is some form of residential on both of those.
So this is Commissioner Anderson. Like, I'm going to recap our, our previous meeting with this where Commissioner Hanson wasn't there. So I'm going to recap kind of what transpired. Um, the biggest concern with this piece here is that there's no access to it at all. And the only way for it ever to be developed or have anything useful done with it is to get some sort of access. Um, the city was uh, applying for a zone change on, on the same evening for the piece to the south of it to make it R A one half. And we, as a, as a commission, we voted to, uh, to table it until the, the piece from the city had been, had been voted on by the city council. So we knew what they were going to do because the argument was do we make them both P U D or do we make them both R A one half? And that, and we went a long way to get, get to that point, but that was the point is that whatever they are, they should both be the same. And so we decided to wait till city council voted on the piece south of it. So we would know what that piece was going to be. And we had talked at, at that point that whatever city council approved that piece, that we were going to prove this piece to be the same. Now, the, the residents at the time, the, the major concern was that because it's so long and skinny, you can't build a house on, on a lot of that. They were concerned that it would become a junkyard or, or things like that. And, you know, we talked to staff about it and, and the, the consensus was that whoever owns that property or whatever is, is done to it, has to follow city guidelines, just like anyone else, you know, as far as what they can do on, on the land or not. So by allowing this piece to be R A one half, similar to the one below, then he's a, you know, whoever develops it, they're able to put three houses on it. You know, as opposed to if it was all P U D, then they'd come in with a P U D and they could have put whatever they put on it. So that's kind of the recap from the previous meeting.
The other part of the history that I failed to mention is in the transaction, a easement right for a public trail on the east flank of both of those lots was secured and documented. Yeah, well, it's the city, the parks folks are excited because it's the first documented in the name of the city spur of a trail that they hope to see stretch all the way through the fields to the south and, and up to the north. But, but yeah, that trail was also documented. And of course, a trail and the canal are going to limit the use of these parcels as well. And so what's, what does it mean? It means that somebody owns both of those lots and it's going to have the opportunity, if they wish, to propose to the city how they want to use it.
Is it wrong to assume these, with regards to access, that they'll be similar to like a flag lot? Is that?
I think that's the only reasonable assumption here, yeah.
And the drive being to the, the rear of the houses that are in the picture?
I don't know which side it would be on.
They were talking about, you probably have a driveway between the middle of the south piece and you have one, two, three, three houses.
Yeah, so the opposite of the trail, the opposite of the right side, correct?
The driveway would be just to the left of that red arrow, but even the driveway has to have distancing requirements. The driveway would be just to the left of that red arrow, but even the driveway has to have distancing requirements and things.
But it's limited to three homes. We've we've decided.
It'd be R A one half, so it'd be three homes, yeah.
So one will have that long tail piece somehow, side yard, backyard.
The other, the other things that transpired at that meeting, there was concern about, you know, some people said they wanted the city to make a park there with the piece below, but but we had talked about it. It wasn't large enough to turn into a city park per per city ordinance. So that was not anything that was possible. Uh, they wanted to maintain, people were concerned about maintaining the canal space in case a trail ever wanted to go through there, which from what I was told, that that canal easement still is maintained by the city, um, if they ever wanted to do something with it. And then some other people said they wanted the city to to put in a trail, you know, head or whatever, which the swap here allowed them to get a trailhead up by Snob Kai. So it was kind of the best use for the property.
Okay.
And that and that piece, small and narrow as it is, you know, we just dealt with the issues on a narrow piece. It's not great for P U D either, right? And so you get to decide whether this is better than than what you had, which is a change from a P U D to R A, R A one half.
The one thing we can be assured of is there's not going to be townhomes back there. That would be, that would be. I'm telling you right now, there will not be townhomes back there.
And it and that's, this is kind of the conclusion. This is the kind of the conclusion that we came up with at the last meeting was that that, you know, if it stayed P U D and the one below it went P U D, you know, and then maybe the piece of the H way land got acquired, then you would have a whole bunch of whatever. You could have townhomes, you could have whatever. This way it limits it to three homes. Yeah, there are R A one half and you've got, you've got, you know, an acre below and and this piece here probably can only fit one house. So maybe four if they're small, but I don't think so. Not if they're R A one half.
No matter the use, there's that strange sliver to the north. It's not strange, just narrow, kind of difficult to use piece, but I don't think we have a solution to.
I guess, I guess one thing I'll I'll mention that that Drew had talked about as well. Some people were were concerned about, you know, large animals or whatever. And he measured it. There's, there's not enough space for large animals going in there because you have to be a hundred feet away from any structure and there's just not enough room. I mean, you could have something teeny teeny right in the dead center, but it's, it's not really big enough to do any of that. So.
Could, could they do a meets and bounds like where the arrow is? And if that guy wanted to buy straight across, he could do that. Can you do a meet and bounds on that and sell it?
So if you change in it to R A one half zoning, if if they found that they could accomplish the zoning and the spacing they needed for their plan and they had some excess at the top and they wanted to sell little strips, they could, they could propose a subdivision and do that, yeah.
Many subdivision.
A single house.
The challenge becomes, you know, you hire an engineer and pay them what they pay and you redo your 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 plans, you know, how much do you earn from the, how much is that homeowner going to pay for a little strip and it doesn't justify the investment and but could they, could they in theory do that? Yes.
But they could hack off part of that to the, to the current landowner.
I think that's what I, that's the answer. I thought I was, that's the question I thought I was answering.
That's what you were answering.
Which was.
You're saying you have to change it into a P U D to hack it off?
No, I said you have to bring a plat and some divide. You've got to create a legal description that that you can sell and convey.
Right.
And right now the legal description is the shape of that tall triangle.
Okay, that would be the new minor subdivision that we've been, is that what it would be, right?
It would be a subdivision, yeah.
Now, I guess, just so so we're not misleading to anyone in in the audience. I guess the only way you could have more than three homes would be if, let's say, he turned that top sliver into a park or or something and 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 he got bonus density for it, then maybe you could get another house, maybe.
But they're not applying for that. They're just.
No, I know they're not. I'm just saying, so there's, I'm just saying for the record, some of the people had said, is it only three? And that's the only way you could get more than three is if there was bonus density because it was turned into some sort of open space.
Yeah, with driveway access requirements and then building setbacks off of the R A half, really your maximum is you're going to get your, how it's proposed is the three lots.
It's likely only get three.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to hold your questions so we can open up the public hearing to see if there's any members of the public that would like to speak to this item. If you'd like to do so, please come to the microphone and state your name. So Kathy can hear you and please try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you. Yeah, uh, that's a good question.
This is a new issue. You can have all three.
We'll see how your first three go.
Vicki Walters, I live at ten ninety-five South White Sands Drive and my house is right there. Right there. And when I moved there, there were cows and horses back there and they were perfectly good neighbors. Little few fries, but you know, being raised here, I'm used to that. What my concern is, is I was told they were going to put townhomes there and of course I came unglued. I don't want that. But how are you going to get somebody to have a driveway and all that back there? I don't really care about having homes back there. But I'd prefer trails and a little fun place.
But but the issue is, is that somebody has the land, they own the land, they have the right to try to develop it.
City buy it and pick that in their name.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Who made that rule and why can't we change it?
That's the city ordinance, but it wasn't for sale to Washington City. So so Washington City hasn't been offered that piece.
Okay, couldn't Washington City go say, can we buy this and change the ordinance and give us a park?
They could. That would be the Washington City Council. Um, that that doesn't mean the owner has to sell it to us.
Well, you can try. That's, oh, I just don't want a bunch of people back there. A couple of nice houses. They're building up above that beautiful homes above us. But I don't know how they're going to get in and out of there. Somebody's already came back there and dug up the property till it's ridiculous. So I guess the owner did, but that's my main concern and I believe it's most of my neighbors is, you know, what's going on back there? It's all we want to know. Whereas I'm concerned, put horses and cows back there. Maybe you don't.
Thank you, Vicki.
I'm Kevin Williams. I'm lot forty. Vicki's forty-three. So I'm right on the corner on White Sands and Indian, Indian Springs. My concern was, we were told by the city that they were pushing this their decision to tonight. So I actually thought I was coming. It's going to be the City Council member, not the planning, but so I'm a little bit confused because I know one is Z twenty-one, eleven and one Z twenty-one, twelve on the proposal. So I'm on the piece that where the arrows drawn to. We were told that on the master plan, there's no, um, which is trying to figure out, because that's about five feet higher than the elevation of our, of our cement wall fence that's six feet in our backyard. That's already sits up about six feet, about about five feet above that. So if someone built a home there, I mean, that whole view of Shinobi Kyvi is gone. And so that was our only concern. And I know there's not much you can do about it. You buy a, you buy a home and then it's developed and a lot of people lose their view, right? And that's probably, a lot of people get upset, but so we were just here trying to figure out, I thought they were going to be talking about that piece tonight next to the piece you're talking about now, but I guess that did that, did that bigger burn? They, oh, okay. So they said it was going to be on July the seventh. So, but anyway, so I don't know. I guess I.
I'm not sure what you're remembering. This one was rescheduled because it hadn't been properly noticed.
Right.
In essentially in the newspapers and this online publication. That's why it was postponed until today. The other one did get properly noticed and so it proceeded on, on the.
The city meeting we went to, they said they were going to table it.
Yeah, this is the one those tabled, the lot that circled was tabled. This is the public hearing.
All right.
It'll then go to the City Council for decision.
Okay.
The lower lot went through because it had been properly noticed.
So it got designated from Ag to half acre. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yeah.
And then can you answer the question? Is the master plan, is that you can't have a driveway that comes out onto Indian Springs?
There's no master plan about driveways. There's just standards.
Okay.
And so the the new landowner is going to have to come to staff like every other developer, present their proposal, let staff review it. And and so that will be something that staff would review and and then and then help them put something together that at least can be recommended to the Commission.
And so am I right in, uh, what I thought I heard you said, so lot forty, forty-one and forty-two, that piece that the arrows is the max you could get there would be maybe one home?
So we're, we're saying that based on the zoning that's proposed, R A one half, it appears that you can get up two to three, maybe four, if you play with the flag lot, but the flag lot's got issues and roads, shared roads and accesses. And so there's a lot of issues that are going to have to be built out of that. But yeah, this lot owner could come back and ask for a different zone next year. And and the zoning itself is what dictates those type of projections until there's a proposal on paper. We don't know what they're going to ask for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item? You've done the best. You've got a kid, I've noticed. So hi, hi five to you.
She only listens to me. So don't be fooled. I'm Amber Murdoch. I'm on lot forty-four. Um, so this meeting is to change it from agricultural to the, what, what, because we we all missed whatever.
P U D to R A half.
Okay, okay, um.
What that means.
So that means no, like no townhomes, it would be.
What that means is that with a P U D is whatever, like like the guys just before, where they had a little sliver and they proposed townhomes, whatever. P U D means they could, they could propose whatever they could fit in that area. R A one half would mean they can only do half acre lots.
So those are our options. So I can speak on behalf of all of us, I think, and say that we definitely don't want the P U D. Um, I, I'm right by Castle Stone. I'm right there. Um, I, I would love to buy that land. I just have to talk to the person. Um, these are my concerns. So that canal road, I don't know if it was, I probably wasn't open, but right before I bought my home, it burst. And so all those homes, um, got flooded. And so my concern with developing back there is I have actually, whoever just bought that piece of land, I've already seen dump trucks drive on that canal road. That's fifty, fifteen to sixty-five thousand pounds already on my canal road. And so that's super concerning to me. So A, I would like there to be something communicated to that developer that they cannot be hauling in anything because, tell me if I'm wrong, you're not allowed to drive on canal roads. Like, I mean, that's what I was told. There's an ordinance as far as like regulations.
So the the, that would be a canal company issue. The city doesn't own the canal.
Okay.
But you are correct. This, the canal is very concerned about heavy machinery that drive on top of those roads.
So I will call them.
The issue they look for is, is there enough space? Enough soil above the canal and the surface with the weight to kind of absorb all that. And usually there's not in some places, the the canal pipe is not very deep.
Okay, okay. So I will call them. The other issue that I have is if you look, um, and I just, this is just questions. I mean, obviously I don't feel like there's a whole lot that that I can change besides saying I don't want the P U D. But, um, so if you look at Payet Drive, Payet Drive, the homes are million dollar homes. They were required to set back their homes, I think, twenty-five feet from the canal road. So I'm a little confused with this piece because I'm thinking, A, are those, and I'm asking, A, are those restrictions still in place with this lot? Because of safety or whatever, they, there were laws or like ordinances that they had to do that. So that means yours, your home is like this big, you know, it's really.
Also answer that. The the canal road is not a city road, but there's an easement there that the canal company owns.
Yes, the easement. And so they had to set it back.
And so they can't build structures on on within fifty feet of the center line of the canal. So yes, that same, that same space will have to be maintained throughout the whole length of that.
So it's how many feet?
Fifty feet wide, so twenty-five on each side of the center line.
Okay, so. So then, um.
So does that influence what they can do with it? Absolutely.
So then in my mind, I'm thinking, like, are you going to have a Harry Potter house? Because there's no way you're going to fit a house back there.
It's deceiving the amount of space that's there though, when you look at it.
Oh, my kids go back there every day. I'm, I'm back there.
Right. But I'm saying, if you look at the, those first three homes.
Yeah.
That are on White Sands.
Yes.
Look how big they are.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about my spot where it gets, starts to get narrow and I can see how, I'm just wondering if that would be backyard, what that would be, but.
And and nobody knows until somebody proposes it.
Yes, that's true. Okay.
All we're saying is, is that the the proposal is, is to change it so that it won't allow P U D into half acre lots.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all the proposals tonight.
Yes. And so I guess that what my, what I'm speaking of is for the future date of when they propose plans. So everyone, like, we don't want P U D, we want, yes, okay. There you go. We can all go home and sleep.
And that would, that would mean that it would have the same restrictions as.
Yeah, we all were thinking, so we all were thinking this meeting, I, I, at least the people I talked to was, um, whether to change it to agricultural or to P U D or to the lots. So I think we all missed something.
To change it from P U D because right now it is P U D right now, right now.
We were told we had a choice. I think we all thought we had a choice between like choosing agricultural, but that's the person who bought it, their proposal. I get it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just for fun, should we call Brandon up here and ask him any questions? Jeremy? All right, look for a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Commissioner Bullock, can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any additional comments or suggestions, questions from the Commissioners? Otherwise I look for a motion. The only thing that I want to ask is just clarifying something. In my simple mind, it's a reasonable expectation that homes are going to be proposed to be built. At least a home inside the red that will have either a very long side yard or backyard. Is that correct? Or am I missing something?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything else.
Yeah, and and if you, if you superimpose with your simple mind, which is really hard with this shape, a canal easement on that east side, that's going to influence where that house sits. The house has got to be spaced from the houses to the left and between the canal. And so there's, it's, it's a, it's going to take some good engineering to figure that out. I think that as a matter of just public policy as to how we'd like that to be used, other than requiring that it remain vacant, which we can't without buying it. Seems like some use up there would would probably be a benefit to the neighbors and and just the city at at large.
And there will be additional opportunities, of course, for us to see this when it comes as a.
Absolutely, yeah. This is just a zone change. They'll have to bring, if they're going to do three houses, there's going to be a a new subdivision plan. There's going to have to be a subdivision and you'll, you'll get to go through that whole process.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I make a motion to approve Z dash twenty-one dash eleven. Request to rezone approximately two point two nine acres located at approximately ten fifty south and eight hundred east from the current planned unit development P U D zoning to a proposed residential agriculture half acre minimum R A one half zoning designation. And moving on to City Council for consideration.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting Sheil.
Aye.
Musso.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming this evening and unless there's anything else from the Commissioners.
We, we apologize for keeping you here half tonight, but.
I'll make a motion to close the gender meeting, the planning commission meeting. I'll second.
I've got a first and a second to close the the meeting this evening. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Again, thank you, folks. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Again, thank you, folks.